We're gonna get started in just a minute if you could take your seats, please.
Okay, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Board's study session, facilities master planning continued for Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. And I would ask for a roll call to establish quorum, please.
Clerk Osborne.
Present.
Member Perry. Member Kelly.
Present.
Member Malcheski. President Vickers.
Present. Like to ask Nick to lead us in the pledge, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could rise to face the flag that's in the back right corner of the room. Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Like to ask for a motion to approve our agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Before we begin, I have a couple of comments because this meeting process is a little bit different than what we have had usually. Tonight's workshop study session is planned to present information, most of it new, representing input to date from a variety of sources. The presentations will come first, as we have heard clearly at the initial concept presentation. People did not know how or what to question before hearing the presentation. There will be a brief pause to fill out any question cards that you wish to submit for the question and answer section of the meeting. Public comment tonight will be prior to the board discussion, following the presentation and following the question and answer period. Public comment tonight is only on this agenda item. At special meetings or study sessions, there is not a section for comment on non-agenda items. This is a total focus on this one agenda item. After the public comment, then the board will have their first opportunity to discuss any concepts that we have been presented to date. We have not had that any discussion as such until tonight, so we haven't heard each other's comments, concerns, issues, opinions. And that will take place tonight. I want to just make sure that everyone understands there are no action items on this agenda. There's, there will be no item to vote on, there will be no decisions of that realm being made at this meeting. This is a continuing process, as the title of the meeting says, and we are hoping to continue to work together to move forward and resolve this for the best interest for our students, our staff, and our community. Thank you. So we begin with our facilities presentation.
Thank you, President Vickers, I'll go ahead and lead us off, and thank you, everyone, for coming. I'm going to provide an introduction with the little history and context to set us up to where we are here today and what we're looking for tonight and what we're gonna see. So the initial facilities master plan that we've been working through was first approved in 2015 and included projects identified at all sites and is something that we update annually. All major projects that were identified in that initial approved plan were completed with the exception of the Laguna Beach High School Administration Counseling Building and District Office improvements, which were identified, like I said, in the plan from 2015. In August of 202021, Runal Clark Architects was awarded a contract to conduct a feasibility study that looked into the needs associated with those two remaining projects. But we also, at the same time, because of the new law that expanded transitional kindergarten, added that to the feasibility study for their work. A year later in September of 2022, Runal presented the feasibility study to the board, and then the board directed staff to expand the study to include all sites and include projects that would address the needs of expanding the transitional kindergarten, upgrades to outdated athletic facilities, the enhancement or increase of outdoor learning environments, the increased demand that we've seen for comprehensive social emotional supports that we provide to our students has created a need for additional spaces and opportunities to expand the recreational recreational use of facilities for the broader community. At that meeting and ad hoc, after that meeting, an ad hoc facilities committee was formed to survey the sites and capture all desired improvements. And that committee visited with each school site and their administration and our team from Architects to walk and talk through the potential projects and needs with their school sites. Runal Clark then took that feedback from the school sites and transposed that into what potential projects could be considered that would accomplish all of the needs and wants that were identified, and that was presented at the March 23rd, 2023 study session this year. That study session was the first time we were able to share the master plan update with the community and the board as a whole. And from that, the board had directed staff to conduct community open houses at each school to provide an opportunity for the community partners to further review the master plan update and provide feedback or ask questions. In addition, our staff has developed an online form to gather feedback and questions related to the plan, which has been shared with the board in the weekly update. For context, the comments that we've received so far were five comments submitted online for each of the proposed projects at El Moro, Topol World, and Thurston Middle School. Sixty-nine comments were submitted for the Laguna Beach High School Aquatic Center, twenty-nine comments for the Laguna Beach High School Tennis Courts, twenty comments for the theater and baseball field improvements, and thirty comments for the Laguna Beach High School and District Office projects. These comments were in addition to what has been said at the preceding board meetings and also direct emails to the board from the community as well. A frequently asked questions section was created and added to our facilities master plan update webpage in an attempt to address all the questions that we had received since that March 23rd study session about the plans. And that's what brings us here to tonight, where we're continuing our engagement process and providing additional update options that the board can consider. So you're gonna see a lot of new options tonight that haven't been seen before. And the first presentation tonight will focus specifically on Laguna Beach High School Aquatic Tennis Court and District Office projects, as that's where most of our feedback was provided, so we want to use our time tonight wisely to just focus in on those projects. I will introduce each project and provide a brief overview of the needs and existing conditions associated with each, followed by an overview of the projects and possible elements from Runal Clark. And they go over the site plan or the proposed update for the master plan with each project. And I will close with some challenges and benefits associated with each, hopefully to help guide the board's discussion and questions as we move through each, each one of the three. We ask the board, please feel free to ask questions during the presentation so that we can take advantage of the time we have, but do not get into discussion, as that would be a violation. And one thing to note is that when we talk about the challenges, there are universal challenges that we know that aren't necessarily listed on the slides, and a big one would be interim housing. Anytime you're having to demolish or improve certain facilities, you're gonna have to house people in a different location. So that's a challenge we know exists for the bulk of the projects, but until we have a final scope, we won't know the extent of it. So at the end of the presentation, we'll do our best to answer questions from the audience, and so please fill out the white cards in the back, and we'll go through and sort and do our best to answer those questions, and then anything that we cannot answer or don't have time to get to, our intention would be to add it to our frequently asked questions page, as that already serves as a very robust resource for us. And then after the facilities portion of the presentation, we'll have Mr. Jason Chung from Fieldman Roll Up and Associates, and we'll get into the potential financing options that we can consider that the boards has asked about as part of our update as well. So with that, I will go ahead and jump right into our presentation, and we'll go with the third slide, please. And we'll begin with the Aquatic Center and Tennis Courts project. So the needs that we heard, we heard a desire for a larger pool. The existing pool is in need of major repairs, it's almost thirty years old, it's at the end of its useful life. And there's a lack of parking, parking. And what's unique with our pool is there is significant community use. Recently, we got information from the city of Laguna Beach about that use, and it showed a range between a thousand and fifteen hundred residents that use the pool outside of our students on a weekly basis. As far as community feedback, that are non-students use it weekly. That was over a seven day, an exact seven day period. As far as community feedback with this project, we've heard the need to minimize the impact to our athletic programs and services that's specific to our joint use. We want to look for opportunities to reduce the magnitude of the initial projects that were proposed and exclude additional parking facilities and try to keep the projects in their same general location. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Roger Clark with Runal Clark Architects to talk through what some of the updates could include.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board, excited to be here tonight. You're gonna see multiple options, and you've probably seen these already, but just wanna just give you a brief overview of the ones that were selected. If you were at the the community meeting, we presented multiple options, a thirty-eight meter, a forty meter, and a fifty meter pool at the existing pool location. This slide that you see before you now shows a forty meter pool at that location. There's some challenges with that in terms of the amount of deck area, it does demolish the existing building that you have off of Manzanita Drive, eliminates the pathway from Manzanita down through the pool area out to Park Avenue, but it does keep the tennis courts in their existing location, improves those, keeps most of the parking that you have off of park, surface level parking. It does require some expansion of the mechanical facility because it is a bigger pool. And updates for that, an additional locker space and shower space is because of the amount of surface area of the pool and health code requirements for that. And there are some challenges in terms of just the amount of deck area around the pool. I mentioned, and then there's some significant changes that we'll have to make for accessibility for the tennis courts and the pool together. And so there'll be some details that'll have to be worked out there. You'll see here, there's bleachers on one side of the pool in the longer direction, but not on the short side of the pool, which typically is where you're looking at your swimming events as opposed to water polo, which is in kind of the longer dimension. The next option explored, and just to go back real quick, on that option, the thirty-eight meter and the forty would fit on that location. The fifty meter was deemed just not feasible to locate it there. One of the options that we wanted to look at was, how could we put in a fifty meter pool? And so we started looking at, how do we change this around? And so in this case, we've located the fifty meter pool to the east where the existing tennis courts are, and basically flopped the tennis courts and the pool. That requires new mechanical rooms, locker rooms, changing facilities as a part of that construction, and then obviously the construction of the new tennis courts and the loss of the surface parking, unless you raise that up over a recessed or lower level parking area. The next option looked at the possibility of creating a second pool for teaching and for other activities that could go on at the site. So there's a second twenty-five meter pool by twenty-five yard pool, and then again, a thirty-eight meter pool, which would house most of the activities for the high school for water polo, for swimming events and diving. And then the recreational swimming would be done in the smaller pool, but they would have the advantage of having multiple pool facilities. This does require the tennis courts to be relocated, but as you can see here, the existing building up above off of Manzanita is retained in this option. Next option looks at similar configuration, but in this case, a forty meter pool spreads those tennis courts out just a little bit more, creates more of them in the north-south direction, which is more ideal for playing tennis and gives a little bit more deck space around and has bleachers on two sides of the pool. Fifty meter really doesn't fit going in that north-south direction for a pool facility, and so we've limited to a forty meter, and there's some challenges even here with the amount of deck space just for your coaches, for your referees, for all the other things that go on at a swim meet. And then again, you don't have the second pool facility here either.
So as Roger mentioned, I'll just reiterate some of the challenges and benefits associated with those options. The first is when we lose the existing nineteen parking spaces from the pool parking lot that's already there, that would be a challenge. The intent would be, however, I know this has come up, we would work with our partners at the city to address the need for dedicated pool parking because we know that that parking lot is currently where that dedicated parking is now, so we'd work with them to identify, hopefully, potential options along the street to support that. Some of another challenge is the removal of the nineties office space that currently reside above the pool. Those are used offices, and it includes our only dedicated staff training room, which is heavily used. So we would definitely, that would be a challenge that we'd have to work through and identify additional training location. And it would likely require the removal of the existing walkway that connects Manzanita and Park Avenue, and that's that big staircase that comes down from the nineties in between the tennis courts and pool. And that is frequently used by our neighbors, as well as our students and staff, so it'd be a challenge that we would have to address. Some of the benefits of the options that you saw in here is it does maintain the pool and tennis courts at their current location. It would provide new aquatic facilities to support our programs and community use, and it could provide an opportunity to operate the existing pool while constructing a new one to mitigate the impact of losing the pool. As you notice, when you flip the tennis courts and pool, you would, in theory, we've tried to anyway, keep the existing pool open while you construct a new pool, so that you don't lose the only pool that we have in the city. That, happy to, if we can answer any questions or get an additional feedback from the board on those before we move on to the next.
It's more about the the depth and the size for, excuse me, water polo, and so right now, your current pool isn't CIF regulated in terms of the depth of the pool facility. So you can do it actually with a thirty meter, you could do it with a thirty-four, thirty-eight, forty, up to fifty, even forty-five. In fact, Fullerton did several pools in their high school district, at all of their high schools at forty-five meter. And so it's really up to you in terms of the usability. The one thing that if you get to a forty meter and above is you can install a bulkhead where you can have multiple practices going on so that you don't have to start pool practices for water polo and swimming at, you know, very early hours, and so you can have simultaneous events going on in the pool.
You're part of what we're trying, oh, I'm so sorry. Just to be clear, what we're trying to resolve here is the depth of the pool and the length of the pool.
Yes, and usability for all the activities that you have going on.
Great, thank you.
Roger, I'm, thank you for these renderings. You showed diving and the forty meter option, is diving an option and all the layouts just not marked?
Correct.
And then, does any board member have another question before I ask a second? And you mentioned the deck space.
Yes.
And we have been looking at some of the other recently constructed pools and deck spaces, a big consideration. It's not just the amount of water that fits, it's the concrete around it for the humans that aren't in the pool to stand on. Do we have a sense of how much deck space is in that forty meter layout?
Which layout are you looking at, the original?
In the forty, in the forty in the existing location.
You probably have about fifteen to eighteen feet from the edge of the gutter to the bleachers in this, but you have very limited space for bleachers themselves. As you can see in this one, there isn't bleachers on the end, and so there's really not a lot of space for that. You could look at possibly eliminating those shelters there on the end, moving those to a side, but you're gonna have very little circulation space on the one side and keep that to the end. It's very tight in terms of where the forty meter, the end of the forty meter pool and the existing building are right now, that's probably only about fifteen feet, which is fairly tight for a pool.
Okay. Does any other board member have a question, Member Perry?
What is the setback on that, from the bleachers to the properties on that side?
You're probably only about five feet right there on that side. You're actually quite a bit, you're quite a bit lower. You're actually, that's, that's keeping the pool deck down where it is now, and so it's probably, I'm gonna guess right now, about eight feet lower than the neighboring property, which is the house there to the, to the west.
And then how high would the bleachers be? Would you be able to see them from the backyard?
You're probably about five to six feet. You're talking five rows, and you're only going up, you know, about eight inches per row.
So if it's eight feet lower and it's going up five feet for the bleachers, but then that's the bottom of the bleacher, then people are sitting on top of that.
And you may have a shade facility or shade shelter over the top of them, depending on how you want to design it. It's really up to the district of how you want to do that.
Roger, what's the height of the retaining wall when the the annex comes out? It's already a really large imposing wall, so one of my concerns is that height, I just wanna know how high is it?
That's about eighteen, I'm gonna say, I think it's about eighteen feet from that difference with the pool deck to up to Manzanita. You're actually just pushing that back, so you're demolishing that building, and then we would excavate, we'd probably have to shore that slope while we build the wall and backfill it, recompact it, and make it structurally sound.
And so because of the topography, does the retaining wall get higher? Does the retaining wall get higher than existing?
Retaining wall would be essentially, it'd just be further back, but almost the same height.
Do you know if the retaining wall that's there now was built when the current pool was built?
I don't, maybe Ryan does.
I just know there was a school building there before, but I don't, you know, I can't visualize the back.
Not positive about that, but it does appear that it was constructed with the original pool construction because it matches all the walls, even to the lower parking lot, retaining the pool deck that's there now.
It's early in the process, but would the bleachers be a permanent installation?
It's really up to the district, typically, they would be aluminum bleachers that could be moved or easily relocated.
Thank you.
And more, Roger, thank you. Are there any, like, significant cost differentials between any of these options? Like, is there one that's a lot more expensive or?
Anytime you go to a fifty meter pool configuration, the price is going to jump up. It's really just depends on the surface area of the pool, but you do have, you know, larger filters, larger heaters, and so the equipment, everything that goes along with that does jump up in terms of that, and so it's really, it's kind of a linear function with the size and surface area of the pool.
Yeah, but even with switching the pool location, that also sounds.
Well, yes, because if you look, say, between this option where we're retaining part of that existing building in terms of changing rooms and locker rooms and that part of it versus the scheme here where we're having to build all new, that's a significant cost difference.
Okay.
Roger. Excuse me, Roger, I had another question. On the, the first one back on the forty meter where tennis and pool stay in the same location, tennis is showed unshaded. So are they newly constructed or are those existing courts?
I think that's actually in the existing location and existing configuration. Yeah, the only thing we did is we made adjustments with how the walkway going to the tennis courts is executed. Yeah, and the bleachers moved, yes.
Any other questions before we move to the next section? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna get into Laguna Beach High School Admin and Student Counseling Center. The needs that we've identified were to centralize student support services and create more welcoming environments for student staff families, and increase meeting spaces available for collaboration, upgrades to current building code and environmental standards, and an opportunity to enhance our outdoor learning environments and provide spaces to meet our staff needs. The community feedback that we received was to reduce the size and scope of the proposed work, eliminate additional parking, and keep the Laguna Beach High School and District Office facility separate. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Roger again and show how that scheme and the feedback has been applied to this potential project.
Thank you, Jeff. This scheme looked at, how do we pull this building as close as we can to the existing larger two-story, both the library and classroom building and the larger scale theater building, and so it removes the existing administration and about four classrooms that are kind of form a quadrangle there next to the theater. And so what this does is creates a two-story administration and classroom building, which replaces those classrooms that are removed, but also provides for added administrative space, counseling space, and career space for the students and meeting their needs. One of the things we looked at was creating a way for students to be able to come into the, the, kind of from the back of the building, public and administrators to come in from the front of it. This is purely conceptual, we haven't sat down with staff or anything, but the idea is just to, and I'm gonna come back to that slide, is to show how this might start to work. And so the idea here is on the top of this drawing here, conceptual drawings, you see the public entry, you see the administrative part, kind of is in a bar across the top of the building, and then from that hallway that you see to the bottom is really all dedicated to students, to counseling, psychologists, mental health, all the things that are supporting students, nursing as a function of, you know, making it close to where they are and making a focus be on, on providing those students services. And then as we go to the second floor, and again, just purely conceptual, is look at, how can we bring back those classrooms and provide for the addition, for the space that's been removed and provide that in this kind of the same minimal type of footprint on the site? So let's go back real quick, this is just a view. One of the concerns is, what does this look like? And so this is a view of that corner, and so it really tries to set back from that corner, keeps that existing slope mostly intact, does change it a little bit in terms of that outdoor courtyard area off of the back of the building in this scheme, but there's nothing that says that it has to be exactly like what you're seeing here. The idea is, is to get in front of you as a concept for how this might be configured in terms of administrative space and classrooms and what that might look like. So turn it back to Jeff.
So as we look at the challenges associated with this project, parking is not addressed, and the potential cost savings associated when we did combine the district office and high school admin space would not likely be realized because you don't get the economies of scale with that project. Over the benefits, it would provide an opportunity to give students sufficient space to support their needs, especially as important, as I mentioned at the beginning, with the expansion of the social emotional supports that we provide for all of our students, as well as implement sustainable building design to support our district goals with our reduction or carbon neutral goal by 2030. And the reduction in square footage may actually be more conducive to And the reduction in square footage may actually be more conducive to remaining, makes it more conducive for these products remain in their current location. And it also provides an opportunity to upgrade the aesthetics and do improvements that are consistent with neighborhood design and expectations. With that, as we look in, oh, sorry, so we'll leave it for board questions after this project.
Of the current classrooms, how many would be replaced?
Six.
Six, thank you.
I heard you mention that we were losing outdoor space. And one of the questions I had about this administrative structure was whether or not particularly around some of the counseling, it was possible to utilize outdoor space, which is, you know, would, would make for a nicer counseling and, you know, student area.
And actually, the enhancement and increase of outdoor spaces for our student in use is a priority within the whole, all of the projects. So yeah, absolutely, you looked at.
Great.
Roger and Mr. Dixon, does the, this outdoor space replaces the courtyard that's kind of surrounded by buildings that's very boxed in?
Yes, and actually enlarges that space significantly. The idea here is to be able to, now I'll go to the floor plans. That kind of gray large rectangle there is a kind of a career center and counseling center. And to be able to spill directly to the outside, have outdoor seating, have outdoor social areas, those kinds of things that is an extension of that facility immediately adjacent, which is, I think, what you were talking about. And so the idea here is to create a much larger area than what you currently have.
Okay, and are there access points? It feels so walled off right now that I, my, my hypothesis says that it's hard for students to get to it and that's why it never gets used, the existing outdoor space. So is this, have more access points?
I think.
Which outside space are you referring to? The senior, the old senior quad? Thank you.
So, so it does, it's adjacent to the current thirties classrooms, which there would be opportunities to connect the thirties classroom wing along with the artist theater. Both of those, we'd have opportunities to connect those with the campus through those existing, you know, circulation corridors.
Any other questions before we move to the next section? Thank you.
Okay, that'll take us to the district office section. As far as the needs, very old offices and they would require significant upgrades to be compliant with current building code. And we know that as we walk through them. We would be able to improve the efficiency of staff and provide updated meeting spaces for a wide range of public engagement that occurs. And examples of that would be our community advisory meetings, our task force, board meetings. And we want to incorporate and have the opportunity to incorporate flexible building design in spaces to allow for an easier adaptation to current and future needs. That's one of the big things when you get an opportunity to build new is make it as flexible as possible so you don't have to rebuild it over time, you evolve into the space itself. The feedback that we heard was reduce the proposed square footage from the original plan to keep the district office separate from any school site. Do not exceed the current building heights so we're not impacting or changing any views and consider the impacts related to traffic, light and noise. That'll open it up for any questions from, or I will turn it over to Roger to go over the proposed projects.
Thank you, Jeff. Here again, we looked at multiple options and obviously it's not gone through detailed programming other than the feasibility study that we did previously in terms of looking at what could be done either with modernization and or expansion of your existing district facilities, offices or rebuilding them. And so this looks at a concept of replacing the existing buildings completely on the site in a single story configuration. The one on the left here just keeps the existing parking lot basically intact, removes the existing buildings and then places them basically back at about the level. It'd probably be a little bit lower than the existing main district office, but not as low as the other buildings. And so kind of a middle level, if you will. And so that's just a matter of how we work out topography and engineering as a part of that. The one on the right looks at a possibility, just for your consideration, is if you looked at lowering the right half of that parking lot, in essence, lowering that down and then bringing in an upper level of parking over the top of that coming in basically at grade, if you see on the eastern side of this facility right there, that would actually come in at grade, right directly in over the top of that. So what that requires is you basically to lower that existing parking lot down and then put a upper level of parking. And so that's at the same level as the existing finished floor of, of the existing district office, that upper level. And so your parking lot would basically be tilted downward. Right now, you're much lower at the drives on the west side of, of the district office complex there. And so that was just a possibility of being able to get about additional sixty-eight parking spaces, if that was the will of the board and the community. But again, we've heard a lot in terms of, do we want additional parking? Do we want additional cars to meet those needs? And then we looked at the possibility, and this depends on, you know, the size of this is going to depend on whether you demolish that nineties building and whether you want to replace that square footage or need to replace that square footage in the building. This is a slightly larger building here and forces us kind of to go to a two-story configuration. Idea here would try to be is to keep that as low profile as possible. And in this case, lowering the elevation of that building, probably down to the level of the lower buildings on the existing site, lowering that parking lot. And then whether you want to build the additional parking over the top or not is really a question for the board.
As far as challenges and benefits, each has their different, whether you go one story or two. One story would increase the building footprint to capture the square footage necessary. So that could limit the landscape buffer space that we have available. A two-story, there's a, the building circulation have to be considered as it would require compliance with American with Disabilities Act, so likely have an elevator. So really working out how that flow could be incorporated into the building. The benefits, with the potential reuse and it would, could be an option to reuse what we could with building A and that could be a cost saving for us. Both options do not exceed the current roof heights. So we're taking advantage of the topography we have over at our district office space. And then the reduction in square footage, like the high school, allows the facilities remain at current location, similar shape, size and integrate into the local aesthetic and architecture with our neighborhood. Now I'll leave it open for any feedback or questions from the board.
Questions?
With the addition of the two-level parking, how many additional parking spaces would that be?
We're calculating about sixty-eight spaces. And that maybe, that's, that could vary just a little bit, just with the number of ADA spaces that we have to have that takes up some more room. So you might be down to about sixty-four.
And so what would the total be?
You're probably about, up to about a hundred and seventy-five, I believe. I think you have a hundred and thirteen. Existing parking lot has a hundred and thirty-two spots. So if you added sixty-four to sixty-six, you're getting closer to two hundred.
But with some of these plans, we're losing some parking, correct?
Correct. Some of the plans you saw with the pool and tennis courts would require the capturing of the existing pool parking lot and that's nineteen spots.
And that's nineteen spots. Thank you.
So the, the total, I had the same question. I don't want to get in discussion, but so it's a hundred and thirty-two existing in both of these, where you go a split level parking garage on the east side, we get close to a hundred and ninety-eight spots, just in this lot.
Yeah.
Okay. And the top of that parking structure, when you say kind of at grade, is it at grade with the adjacent church?
It's, no, it's actually below still the adjacent church. That's actually goes up significantly higher.
Okay.
It's actually at same grade as park is where you see that arrow to the right on the plan there.
But I put your.
I'll highlight it.
Yeah, thank you.
There, right there. So basically, instead of right now, you go down into that parking lot, you would actually go, you might go up like a foot or half a foot or straight in.
So the current height of the retaining wall that maybe we're not noticing is pretty significant up to the church property.
And so actually, what we would be doing is lowering that into the parking lot. And so that wall is going to get a little taller.
Okay.
Because of that.
And Mr. Dixon, I, I think we're gonna, I'm sorry, does it? The, I had read in the FAQs that our junior, senior and staff parking needs are approximately five hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty staff and two hundred juniors, two hundred seniors. Is that a rough estimate of what we think is coming into the high school area for parking?
If you use a conservative, the fifty percent of juniors would be driving and fifty percent of seniors. We had it tabulated about four hundred and two needed spots to support students and staff. And just to go through the rest of the numbers so everyone is aware, the hundred and thirty-two existing in the parking lot today, nineteen in the pool parking lot. And then when you look at the surrounding, just directly adjacent to the high school, if you count all the marked spots, it's about a hundred and fifty-three.
Those marked spots would be on Park Avenue, St. Anne's, Short and Wilson.
Correct.
And both sides of the street?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's not marked spots though on the, like on St. Anne's, for example, there's not marked spots on the residential. So it's only on the, our, our property as you go around outside of Park Avenue, correct?
Yeah, however, you're able to see based on people's parking habits currently. When we did the count, you could see how many cars could fit in, in a rough space. So that's included in a hundred and fifty-three on both sides around the high school.
The current pool parking lot, is that mainly used by the community members? I, because I, it's what my observation is.
Correct. It has a dedicated pool parking for the community.
That dedication is on one side and for part of the day or it's, is it limited?
Yes, it is limited. It's on the north side.
Thank you. I had a question, Jeff. You referred to could potentially reuse the district office building A and it would be cost-saving. So that would mean that you would not be completely demolishing it?
Yeah, without the scope to be determined, if you just assume you could do some components of that building that already exists, like the shell or exterior of it and just remodel the interior, that could be a possibility and it could potentially save some costs.
Would that possibility mean it'd still be separate buildings or would they become still? If it, you just showed us one solid building.
Yeah, if you remember the prior study that we did, we actually had a remodel of their existing main district office and then a new building off to the side where the business services officer division is currently. And so it was two separate buildings.
Thank you. For the new parking structure, if it was a second story, what does it look like on the Park Avenue side? Is there any, it doesn't look like there's any landscaping, it's just cement wall?
The rendering that you see here actually shows that parking. And so you can kind of see the impact of that. So you would see the end of that garage, if you will. So we, you know, shown a, a landscape buffer along that, but the street is sloping up. The parking is staying level. And so that's a kind of a decreasing, when you're at the farthest end of it, you're going to see more of the wall, you're going to see less of it as you get to the eastern side of that parking structure. And so the idea is, is that we don't want to have any closed structure where we have to mechanically ventilate it. And so we want to keep the sides as open as possible. We would assume that we would do some type of metal screening and that to keep out, you know, just people going into the facility. But the idea would be is put landscape buffers along Park Avenue so you're not seeing this huge profile.
Thank you. Other questions from the board on this section? Jeff, what do you have next in your order of the presentation?
That was the last of the proposed project updates based on the feedback that we've received so far. And we are still collecting our, our comment cards or our question cards up here, the white cards. So without any, any more discussion, we could take a break and sort these and then get to Q and A.
Am I right that we've taken into consideration as many of the comments that the community has made as far as in what we're, what we're proposing? That we're not, nothing is higher than it was before, except maybe the, the lights, structures for the LEDs. But we're, we're basically have tried to take all the, all of the, all of the concerns of people in, in, into consideration.
Correct.
Thank you.
President Rivers, I just wanted to extend some thanks to Roger and to Mr. Dixon's team. We had over three hundred pieces of public input received and to condense it down to forty-five minutes and a dozen slides is really helpful for, at least for me, I can't speak on behalf of the board, but thank you guys, that was very helpful.
We would, we'd take a five-minute break so that anyone who wants to fill out a card can fill it out before we start the Q and A.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order so that we can begin the questions and answers. If you could take your seats, please. I'm not, I'd rather not use the gavel, that's so. May I have your attention, please? Thank you for submitting the questions and we'll begin. Mr. Dixon, I'll let you decide the order among your group over there and, and we're attempting to answer, take in many, as many questions and answer them as possible. And if the answer to your question either brings forth an additional part of a question, then outside of this meeting, if you contact the staff and delve into that further, because we want to get through as many questions as we can tonight, thank you. Public comment will come after the Q and A before the board discussion, thank you.
Okay, thank you, President Vickers, th- these aren't in any particular order, we're just trying to organize them by category. And we do appreciate the questions and feedback, some of them weren't questions and then were feedback, but it is appreciated, so thank you. So I'll take the first one, it says, "To the point of the, the city pool data," says, "Explain the thousand people per week, it's very unlikely, clarify that it's, it is or not different people." That was data that we received from the city, now we can go back and clarify what exactly is broken out by, they did provide a breakout by the type of program that was being served, and that ranged between about nine hundred and sixty people per week to a peak of about almost sixteen hundred that we saw. So we'll get clarification on the, the variances of the types of people, but that's the information that we got. Another question is that, is what was presented tonight, all that is being considered, or original proposals still being considered? It's a good question, what is being shown tonight was based on all the feedback we got from the original proposal. So those aren't necessarily off the table in any regard, but it's, we're trying to incorporate the feedback and adapt that original proposal to something more tangible and something that we would all want to move forward with. So that's the intent of tonight's meeting, was not to necessarily replace, but it is to show evolution of those plans. So I'll pass it down to Roger, or you want to go next with some of the questions?
Sure. First question, no apparent order. "Is there a way to keep the staircase from the upper Manzanita to the high school next to the current pool? Losing the staircase would cause significant delays to students trying to get down to the school and residents walking to town." It really depends on which option and which configuration is selected by the board, is it possible? Yes, is it difficult? Yes, but there is a way to do it. You could basically run a staircase, basically ninety degrees to the end wall of that and create a way down through there, but it's not an easy thing to do. If you keep the pool there and expand the existing pool northward, having a way so that you're not walking through basically a pool deck without having a fence around it, that, that becomes a, a challenge for you, and so, but is it possible? Yes. Next question, really different topic, what is the existing square foot of the district office? And I don't have the exact number, so please don't hold this against me, but I do know it's on the frequently asked questions that the district has posted on their website, and I believe it's about ninety-seven hundred to ninety-eight hundred square feet. The difference that you're seeing there, about twelve thousand, is looking at some of the additional services and inefficiencies that they have now that they don't have space for, they have very few restrooms. Their IT department is really on top of itself and has a complete lack of space for the work that they do. And so it's looking at those kinds of things and then expanding things like having community meeting rooms, boardroom, and that type of function. Next question. "If there is a new second-story parking structure, can you please speak about the lighting? Is it possible to inset lighting into the walls rather than the current lighting? Yes and no." And I, I say that, what we can do is pull the lighting away from the exterior or perimeter of the structure and bring it more into the interior, but we are required, and, and just for safety conditions, is to have at least one-foot candle in that lighting structure. But what we can do is look at, and it may sound counterintuitive, but more lighting fixtures, but lower lighting fixtures that cut off the light directly on the surface. And so by lowering the light level, you're actually keeping a uniform light level at the, at the surface of the parking structure, but you're not having it spill over into the neighboring properties. Can you please speak on the lighting for the proposed pools? Again, it goes to kind of that same questions, although in a pool, what we have is a distance issue. And so what we have to look at is the height of that lighting fixture to provide adequate lighting for the pool's surface. And so by bringing that light closer to the edge of the pool, it cuts down on visibility in terms of you're looking through a pole, you're looking through something, but you can actually cut that light off and not have it spill into the neighboring properties. And so there's a lot of study that has to go on in terms of how you design those lighting systems for a pool facility. I, I don't have a definitive answer, but we can actually cut that off to where there's really down to a half a foot candle, five or even a foot away from the edge of the property line or even closer than that. Next question, if there is a new second story, oh, I'm sorry, that's the same one I had. That was upon the lighting for the second story parking. "What is the cost difference between the two-level parking and the single-level parking? I'm estimating roughly about two and a half to three million in construction costs for that right now." Again, we'd have to verify that and work through all the design, but that's a, a rough number right now. Next question, if the additional parking level was added, would there be a new wall on the north? There would be a low, about a three-to-four-foot wall on the north, but not a significant height wall. How high would that be? I think I just answered that, and yes, there would be a landscape buffer and a slope planned for the area on the north. Does the current parking lot have a grade that slopes down to the north? I'm, I think it means from the north, yes, and that grade would have at the bottom of the slope, because what we're doing is lowering that existing parking lot. It would have a, a small retaining wall along that east side of that, that lot. And you go back over the height of the parking structure, it looks from the drawing, it is much higher than street grade. It is higher than the street grade at the west end of the parking structure. It's going to be approximately, what we're projecting is about a grade of one forty-five. And so if I look at that parking deck, it's going to be like this, and then a street is going up like this, so at the west end of that parking structure, more of it is going to be exposed. And so along the street on Park Avenue, you're going to have a triangular section, if you will, going up that street. And so at the front end of that, you're going to have about, from the street, about seven to eight feet. At the far east end, you're going to have zero. Next question, with the forty-meter pool in the existing location, is there any requirement to add additional parking? And technically, no, there isn't a requirement to add additional parking. We would have to have ADA accessible parking and accessibility to the pool facility. And so we would have to show the state architect who governs the approval of the pool that we have accessible parking and accessible, accessibility to the public way. Next question, how much lighting will be, will need to be added if the parking lot is redone? Today, there are five lights. Again, it depends on the configuration, if you just leave it as surface parking, you're really not changing that parking lot at all. If you're adding that second-level parking, we would have to add lights underneath that parking level and above for the upper-level parking. And again, it would go back to studying what is the optimal height and number of fixtures for that, so that we don't have that spill over into the neighborhoods. One more, with options that move pools, how are you going to significantly reduce noise, lights, et cetera, to houses and neighborhoods right next door? The sound increase would be unbearable for houses on Manzanita. Tough question, but what you're looking at is basically the same functions, it's just flipping the two of those from one side to the other. So there really isn't a change in, in the use. The lights actually are not that old, and so I'm assuming right now that they're the proper type that cut off the light fairly close to the edge of the courts. And so what we would look at was, how can we minimize any light spill into neighborhoods? We would look at landscape buffers, one of the things the district has talked extensively about, is providing landscape buffers wherever possible, and even possibly sound walls next to it. But what you don't want to do is cut off views and, and those kinds of things either. And so I don't know if you want to comment further on that, Brian or Jeff? That's the ones I have.
No, I, I don't have anything else to add to that response. I'll, I'll jump into the cards in front of me. First one, do we need six tennis courts? The answer is yes, for high school, say, F requirements, six courts are, are needed. Is there going to be a shallow end of the pool to accommodate aquatic classes and swim classes? The answer is to be determined, I think we'd look at that component with the location and the size of the pool that is of interest for us to design. So it, with some of the options we saw, some of the, the space is limited for, for the pool. So there could be a challenge to have that type of pool space, depending on what option we, we explore further. Next card, why didn't you draw out a thirty-eight or thirty-five-meter pool in the existing location to add deck space? Can you, can any sound mitigation be added to any proposal? A thirty-eight, thirty-five meter, so the smaller meter pool was analyzed in the existing location. Yeah, I think for the needs that we heard when we did, when that ad hoc committee evaluated the, the facilities, it was that, that pool closer to that thirty-eight or forty-meter, what we shown, we showed tonight was a forty-meter, best addressed the, the needs for the aquatics programs at the high school. But a smaller pool, of, of course, three to five meters less would, would fit in that space, very similar to what was shown tonight. Sound mitigation, that would be something that would be analyzed and part of any sort of improvement done, that's been shown tonight. Sound and acoustics would, would be a design consideration. Next card, the current pool is used by the entire community. This includes families with young kids for summer swim lessons and family recreation. How will this use be addressed if the shallow kids' pool is being eliminated? Where can this very important use be incorporated? I think we acknowledge that the, the current pool is a high school and community pool, and this would be a design consideration we would have to consider with whatever the new, a new pool design would look like. So it would be to be determined with that design process, based on the parameters of where the pool would be located and the space available to meet the, the pool design that's identified. Next card. "Can you confirm that the forty-meter or thirty-eight-meter pool will only be increasing the length and the width will maintain the existing twenty-five yards? That is an option with those pools? I, I don't think that we're at a point right now with this conceptual planning to put exact parameters on the pool, but typically twenty-five-yard width would be."
Typically for high school pools, we would do. Typically for high school pools, we would do a 25 yard by whatever meter long pool.
Next question, is anyone working with or discussing the option of the city creating their own community pool in a different location? We have discussed, the ad hoc committee to discuss with the city, the, the interests that the city has heard. And I believe we have, and Jeff, I don't know if you want to step in, but we're open and interested in just further discussions about, you know, joint use partnership with the city for our pool.
Yeah, we have a joint meeting with the city of Laguna Beach, June 6th. And I would suspect that would be one of the items would be discussed in the facilities section.
Thank you, Jeff. Next card, 50 meter pools are out of favor, not eco-friendly, and new water restrictions will only make this worse. Why a 50 meter pool? I'll, I'll go back to the ad hoc committee. This was a, a need, this is what was discussed with the aquatics group from the high school, that a law, larger pool, up to a 50 beater length would best meet their needs. They have freshmen JV varsity teams in a limited time slot practicing and a pool of that length would allow them to break into different sections of the pool and have adequate water space to, to run the programs that they'd like to run. So that's why the larger pool was identified. But like we talked about, there is a, there are, you know, requirements for the, the games. And then there's the, the amount of pool that is needed to, to run the, the practices and programs that high school athletics have. And then also the youth recreation that's used through, through the joint use with the city. The next question, why is the pool end of life? It needs repair, but why do you say end of life? I think the pool was constructed in the early nineties. So the pool is aging and it, and it is in need of some repairs. So it's at a point where it's a good, it's a good time to talk about the, the pool. Because it does need serious repairs if it's going to continue to be utilized. And the next part, if a 40 meter pool works in existing space, why even consider moving tennis courts? I think the feedback we received, some of that feedback asked, you know, if the tennis courts could remain at the existing property. And so that's why some of the layouts tonight demonstrated that ability. The tennis courts, I believe in one of the options shown did remain in their exact location. It, it did show the pool increasing to the 40 meters. In doing so, it, it did, I believe it showed the walkway from Manzanita to Park Avenue being removed to provide deck space for the pool to function. And in, in doing that, it relocated the, the main viewing bleachers of the main tennis court over to the, the two courts to the north. So there is an option there with a 40 meter pool that does show the tennis courts in the same location.
Brian, if I could add on to that answer, I think one of the questions, why move it? And the idea was is that just to look at the flexibility of the amount of deck space around the pool and the other utilization of that. But again, that's really up to the board to decide where that pool should go.
Thank you. All right, yeah, please feel free to jump in. Is there a good reason to tear up the existing tennis courts and move the pool to an open area that will produce even more noise in the neighborhood? We do not need to move the pool. And there is not a need for two pools in the neighborhood. So pass that one there, but we're, we're giving our, we are, we've listened to the feedback we've received and we're showing options and layouts that are reflection on the feedback we have received. So we're, we're hoping that we're able to show some additional layouts and continue, you know, this process of evaluating and going through different options to, to meet, you know, facility needs for current and future use.
All right, thank you. I'll jump in and take the next couple here. Question is, will the board recommend neighborhood design guidelines to the architects for the next round of plans? I think though we're not in design yet, we've heard very resoundingly from both the community and our board that this engagement piece is important and the aesthetics associated with our facilities in the neighborhood is important. So I would definitely suspect that this would be part of our design process. Just make sure that not only are we putting the best facilities we can in place, but also with the consideration of the neighborhood and how it fits together with that. That's been very prominent feedback for us. So thank you for that question. The next one is another good question. This is a, I won't read it exactly, but on a scale, nothing, no profanity, it's fine. On a scale of A to Z, using the alphabet, A is a start and ZZ end, where are we in this process? And that is, that's going to be a fluid answer, unfortunately. The, the intent of the facilities master planning process, and as we've geared it here now is we really want to make sure we're capturing as much feedback and engagement as we can. So as much as we want to possibly establish an end date, we want to work through this to the point where we get general consensus and our board can give us direction and is comfortable with the decision of moving forward because we know this is a significant investment for the community. And I don't have an end time, but like I said, the facilities master plan is something that is updated annually. So even with this update eventually being approved at some point, whatever iterations of the project, this will be an ongoing process for us every year to not only report back on the projects and the progress that we've made, but also identify new projects in the future. So I hope that answers, again, I'm sorry, I don't have an exact end date. We're not trying to go too slow, but at the same time, we know we can't go too fast with this. And the last question I have is, will taxpayers have an opportunity to vote on this project? Again, more of a complicated question than it sounds, but the short answer would be yes. There are lots of approvals with any of these facilities projects that they need to go through. The facilities master plan being conceptual is the first approval process, and that's through the school board. As your elected officials, that's why I think this engagement is so important that we get all the feedback and hear from you. And then as the projects are designed, there is a whole bidding process where each individual contract has to be awarded. And that's for both for consultants as well as construction contractors that would work on the project. So there'll be a series of approvals that are required for each project. And that is not only to say with, and we'll get into the financing options later. If there were ever another general obligation bond put forward to the community, that does require voter approval. Hope that answers that question for you.
Yeah, one more question here. What is the elevation and size of the proposed aquatics building, housing the showers, et cetera? The impact to the existing residential homes that back up to the tennis courts now would significantly be impacted in view and noise. I'll start with if the pool stays in its existing location, the elevation of the existing shower facility obviously wouldn't change because that building is being retained. You're just adding on to either end of that building. And so the elevation and height of that, we don't see that, foresee that changing. If we move the pools to the east where the tennis courts are, we would obviously want to study exactly the viewscape and how that building, because if we put it east, west, it's going to have more of an impact in terms of where it is on the site than if we put it north, south. Now where you see just the end of the building, if you're above it. Right now, the tennis courts are at an elevation of about 182. We're actually looking at lowering that down to about 180. And that really has to do with the topography around the streets around the pool facility or around what is currently the tennis courts. And so we'd actually lower that profile just a little bit. We can't lower it too much just because of the elevation of the streets and access and, and all of that. But we would try to lower that and create less of a differential between that and the adjoining, basically the level of the existing pool, which is down around 178. Actually, excuse me, about 176. It's about six feet lower than the existing tennis courts. And so what we'd like to do is create less of a differential between those two. And so bringing that down. But again, that's a part of final engineering and design, and we haven't, not even selected to do that yet. And, and it's really not a part of what we're looking at right now. But again, I think part of it is to study, how do we minimize the impact on surrounding neighbors? But it is significantly lower than the elevation of Manzanita Drive and the houses to the north, which are up at an elevation of about 205, I believe. That's all I.
That is all the questions that we have to answer. There are some, some questions that we do need to follow up with additional detail. And we will post on our FAQ that are in the stack over here. But thank you again for submission of those questions. And again, this is not the end of this process as I mentioned. So some of the questions we will, we're not able to answer tonight. And we'll put on a frequently asked questions page because we know, and there's several that weren't, weren't getting to tonight because we don't have the detail. We can.
We have a lot of suits. It's okay. Is it because you're not having the information at hand tonight? Is that, I don't know what his question is.
I don't, yes, it would be because we don't either have all the detailed information we need or some of them weren't necessarily questions, it was more feedback.
More feedback, okay.
Could I maybe make a suggestion that we still haven't gotten to our public comment period?
So. We'll comment, the questions were not a part of public comment, they were separate.
Oh, I understand. I just was wondering if you would be interested in filling out a public comment cards if you got a chance to address the board. That was.
I think he's attempting to say he followed our direction and. Go ahead. Jeff, did you, did you hear, excuse me, excuse me.
Regardless of declining enrollment, we have the needs to support our student programming. And so we have a water polo team, but we, we will have a water polo team regardless of the number of students we have at our schools. We are not cutting programs because we're declining enrollment, we never would. So though the number may be down net right now, in the out years, the numbers could be up. And you know, it, for us, when we look at projections and we look at historical projections all the way back to the eighties, Laguna Beach has gone through periods of time where the schools have been smaller and the schools have grown. And so as we look ahead, you know, projections are hard because a lot of our kids aren't born yet. You know, we serve four-year-olds and up. And so as we kind of look to navigate our projections and our needs, the needs exist regardless of the size of our campuses because we run programs. We have tennis programs regardless of whether there's seven students or 25 students. So in order to meet the needs of our students in an ongoing fashion, that's the belief that I have unless the board determines otherwise that we wish to cut program, we have a fundamental basic need to provide at least a basic level of services to our student.
Thank, thank you for answering that question, Dr. Valoria, because it has been one that's been asked frequently. And if I just may add briefly to that, that I've, I've been through a couple of those ups and downs. And one of the things that board members always struggle with in looking at academic classes is how do we retain classes for students when there's low enrollment? And one thing that we have stayed dedicated to, particularly at the high school level, is to continue to offer programs even when there is low enrollment. That's one of the challenges and that small school districts face. So it's, again, thank you for the answer, and I hope that helps to, to satisfy that. We now will have opportunity for public comment. Clerk Osborne, can you tell me how many submissions we have?
14.
14. The board has a practice of having 20 minutes of public comment with, and we have three minutes each. If we, if the board is in agreement, we can allow two minutes and so we can hear more of the comments. Is that acceptable? Okay, thank you. Would you call the first speaker, please?
Sure, I'll call the first speaker and then the person that comes up next so that this moves along. Regina Hartley, if you come forward to the mic and you'll be followed by Laura Jumani. And just a reminder, we're at two minutes for public comment.
Okay. Hi, my name is Regina Hartley. I've got a graduating senior this year and a graduating senior last year. I, some of my comments have been addressed as far as the pool goes. I still would like you to consider a pool at St. Catherine's since the city just went through that expense. I don't believe we need to add more administrative space. We're a little top-heavy in administration and very low in enrollment. And I would like to know what the board is going to do about that. I asked that same question a month ago to have the board address the declining enrollment and the lower test scores. My graduating senior wants to be an architect and she's a 400 student, co-editor of the yearbook, over 450 hours in community service, a soccer player. And she did not get into some of the architecture schools that she applied to. And she took a camp last summer at Cal Poly for arch, provincing architecture students. And out of 500 high school students, she was the only one that did not have an architecture class at the high school level. And I believe that there was an architecture class offered a while ago, but it was withdrawn. And so I think for a school that is known as the artist, the art programs are lacking. And we should do a little bit more to support our students. In fact, in the words of my graduating senior, she said that the new renovated schools, buildings would be, would make a great senior housing community in 10 years because there won't be.
If I could have Laura Jumani come to the microphone and Ms. Jumani will be followed by Mr. Blonnik. Hope I got that right this time. Go ahead, Laura.
Hello, I'm Laura Jumani and I'm here on behalf of the proposals for the swimming pool. I, I just wanted to address the options where the existing pool would remain. And, or I'm sorry, the existing pool would be demolished and a replacement would be at the existing location. I, I do not see that as feasible. To demo the existing pool, we would be displacing our high school teams. First of all, it would be the water polo, the swim and dive teams. We'd also be displacing all of our community swimmers, the age group water polo teams, swim lessons, junior guard swim tests, all of our youth recreation programs. And just that community piece, as we heard tonight from the city, is over a thousand people per week now. In the summer, that number is even larger. There's no pools nearby to, to displace these people in the temporary manner. There's just no capacity. I know because we were trying to relocate some of our existing water polo games. And it's just really difficult. We had to drive to Los Alamos to have our home games. There's nothing here. So I appreciate the options of building a new pool in a different location, getting that up and running and then demoing the existing pool. I think that would help minimize the disruption and especially for our young kids that need swim for safety reasons. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Blonnik, please come to the microphone and Brian will be followed by Brian Corrigan, please.
All right, my name is Ryan Blonnik and as you know, my property is adjacent to the school property on two sides. I want to thank you for many of these options. Many of them addressed the concerns I had before, which is really thank, I'm really thankful for that. It's very thoughtful. I did want to say that the 40 meter pool directly behind my house is still on the table. And I wanted to clarify something that Mr. Clark said because I believe that the way he explained it, if it was that way, I would be all. if it was that way, I would be all for the bleachers where they are. My house, the, the backyard of my house is more or less of the same elevation as the pool. Uh, Mr. Clark gave me some, um, survey elevation, so I, I know that that's accurate. Maybe my backyard's two feet higher. But what I want to point out is the same thing as my dramatic rendition last week, it's still exactly the same as before. So here's my backyard. I do have some bushes right there. Mr. Clark said it's about five feet to where the bleachers would be. It would only be three feet. And the, it's not eight feet below my backyard. There's an eight-feet wall right there. So when you have bleachers, which are five feet, which is what Mr. Clark said, you have someone on top that's five feet. So you have a three feet of a wall there, but you still have whatever the difference is of a person up, looking up and over into my backyard. And that just still is, it's, it's not, it's not, it doesn't make any sense when you have these lovely, lovely options on the table. Um, this is, this is just not a good option. I do think you should be thinking of the neighbors, um, like we talked about before. I did want to talk about these neighborhood design guidelines that I came up with, which I'm not going to have time to talk about. But I do want to point out that they are not architectural design guidelines. They're actually basic planning design guidelines about setbacks. So if you did address the setbacks, the plans would change. So those are not things to do later. Those would need to be addressed now. Um, they also have landscape buffers.
Thank you, Ryan. Brian Corrigan, please come to the podium. And Brian, you'll be followed by Steve McIntosh. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Brian Corrigan, 458 Hillage Drive, Laguna Beach. My son and my daughter, stepdaughter, actually went to Laguna Beach High School. They did very well. They're both now college graduates and they're doing very well in life. I object to the whole program. I think it's unnecessary. Litigation is still an option. Thank you.
Sir McIntosh, please come to the podium. You'll be followed by, uh, Derek Day.
I won't be that brief. Okay, so let's get right into this. This is question and answers, uh, that were on the, uh, website. Uh, tennis and parking. Let's talk parking. I've been 20 years across the street from the high school. When there was 1,200 students at the high school, there was no problem with everybody finding a place to park. Everybody worked it out. It all worked. So next year, when there's 820, guess what? It's still not going to be a problem. So you don't need parking garages. You don't need all of this. It's just, that's just the way it is. I'm sorry. You, you can make it up all you want. We've heard a lot about options or very few, uh, but they're all in the same thing. How about looking at the, uh, district-owned bus yard out in the, in the canyon? I know it was talked about, dismissed, but how about a pool out there? Where there's batting cages, this huge area. You could even put a district office two stories high over the buses. You could park them underneath. You have tons of room out there. You can go crazy.
Excuse me, please.
Pardon me?
Was, um, asking them not to applaud. Take your time.
Oh, can I get time back there? Thank you. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, so, uh, it just makes sense. You can put a parking garage out there and everything. So that's great. That said, uh, more than one board member has talked about, let's get creative and utilize space efficiently at the high school. So I'd like to talk a little bit about, uh, using the old gym. Let's take a look at the gym. It's, it's extremely viable opportunity. It's a giant space, 11,000 square feet. So it's over two and a half stories high with a basement as well. This building gets used for dodgeball and dance once in a year and some occasional testing space and some sports practice. I can assure you there's schools with more students and just as many programs that utilize one gym and just get by just fine. So this building could be remodeled, used for offices, meeting rooms, multipurpose rooms, social emotional space. And we feel it would be much more economical solution, less disruptive and would repurpose an old tired building. This should free up some space at the district offices. So the expansion there should be minimal. And then the social emotional group can move into the existing high school administration. And as far as the pools go.
I'd like to call up the next speaker, Derek Day. Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. It'll be Kayan Soon.
Hello, board. Thanks, community. Uh, Laguna Beach Water Polo Foundation, current parent at Thurston Times Two. Uh, we support the non-interruption of services option. We'd like to keep swimming the entire time while you guys are constructing the new one, however that works. Not only just us, but the community, those 1,500 swimmers that everybody doesn't think are at the pool. We see them all the time. You should come and swim with us. Come and swim with us. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you.
Derek, thank you very much. Kayan Soon, please come to the microphone. You'll be called, uh, followed by Patricia Cooper.
Well, I've been around Laguna for more than 60 years. I went to the junior high school when it was where the pool is now. So I just want to read, I'd like to address both the facilities and the financing of the proposed $150 million project. I have a question. Has any of the school board members tried to leave when the high school lets out at 2:30 PM? It can take 45 minutes just to get to the Laguna College of Art and Design in Laguna Canyon. The pool that was slipped in without the approval of residents is non-conforming for water polo competition. It is fine for use by the community. The pool was recently repaired. The tennis course, tennis court saw major improvements. The high school was built in 1934. It is 88 years old. So I have Google Earth. It's not a good picture. There's, as you can see, it's surrounded by residents. And. Okay. The case of emergency Park Avenue to Coast Highway is the shortest route. So the October 28th, 1993 firestorm and five incidents of armed individuals, one with an, was an ex-high school student who shot up LBHS with his AK-47. This is a wake-up call. Google Earth shows the undeveloped expanse of land surrounding Ilmore Elementary School and easy access to Coast Highway. There has been studies to annex land from the county for $100,000. Please plan for the future. Move LBHS, solve the parking problem, build a new Olympic-sized pool and spend our taxpayers' money wisely because demolish.
Your, your time is up.
Thank you. Um, Patricia Cooper, could you come up and you'll be followed by Clint Christie?
Hello, I'm Tricia Cooper and I've lived, I live on Manzanita Drive. And I was here when we had the firestorm in 93. That was 30 years ago. And Park Avenue is the main artery for getting to top of the world, Thurston, Mystic Hills. And right now, we plan around when we come and go with the high school gets out or when it begins because it's already congested. Traffic is completely backed up. For some reason, I was in the line trying to get out down during the evacuation of the firestorm. When I see these parking lots being put on Park Avenue without the only exit, my stomach just churned because it's just not safe. And the next disaster, hopefully there will not be one. I don't know how all the people got out as they did in 93 without any disaster, any catastrophes. But, um, anything you can do, the parking, the school has gone on for as many years as I've been here. And the parking seems to resolve itself. These parking structures seem to be part, uh, built for the people, visitors coming for the events at the high school. And even at that, they managed to find parking. So, um, just for safety for all of your schools, I beg you to.
Thank you. Uh, Clint Christie, if you could come up and you'll be followed by, I just have a last name here, Brown. Can somebody identify themselves for Brown? Okay, thank you. Steve. Steve.
Good evening, everyone. Clint Christie, I'm a 20-year resident of Laguna Beach. My wife and I have very serious concerns over the size, scale, scope and cost of this project. The size, it's too big for this neighborhood with current population trends showing a declining school population. The scale, it's out of character for the neighborhood in a town of under 23,000 people. Scope, it's the largest project in town since the building of the Montage Hotel. Cost, estimated $150 million financed with a public bond. What about construction delays, unforeseen labor issues, change orders, inflation costs and rising material costs, as well as availability of materials such as concrete? Who knows of a construction project that ever finished on time and on budget? We all make concessions to live in this magical town. If we want a boat within a harbor, we need to drive to either Newport Beach or Dana Point. If we want to own a horse, we have to drive to San Juan Capistrano or another community zone for equestrian uses. If we want to play 18 holes of golf on a championship-level course, we need to go elsewhere. I respectfully ask that you go back to the drawing board and make concessions in size, scale, scope and cost of this project. Your decision on this matter will have effects 100 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Uh, Steve Brown, if you could come to the podium and you'll be followed by Chris Alonso.
Okay, thank you. My name is Steve Brown. Uh, the first thing I want to do is hopefully give you guys some information. Uh, some of the information you're getting is frankly lacking. Uh, the first thing to know is that the cost of building a new pool, pump room, bathrooms and stuff like that from the ground up is four to six times more expensive than doing it in place, four to six times more. So the answer is five million in place or 27 moving it. That doesn't even count the cost of the tennis courts moving. I have no idea what that costs. That should have been answered quickly. The next thing I want to let everyone know is that after looking through dozens and dozens of recently renovated and upgraded aquatic facilities and comparing them to new ones, it takes three times longer to build a new one. You gotta get electric down there. You got your pipes, you gotta get all kinds of stuff. So what you're talking about versus doing it in place, it's 18 to 24 months for brand new. If you do it in place, you're six to 10 months. Go to Huntington Beach and ask for God's sakes. They did three in 18 months. That's six a pop. This is not hard math. I would also note that a 35, 38 or 40-meter pool easily fits as is in the space with very little adjustment needed. The pool deck, USA swimming, five feet. That's what's required, five feet, not 18, not 75. I have no idea what's going on here, five feet. I'm not saying that's comfortable. I'm not saying that's what we want, but that's what the rule is. So when you're asking what we're trying to solve for, some of this stuff is right in front of us. The, 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 the last point I want to make is in case you missed it. This is important. The Biden administration yesterday reached an agreement with California, Arizona and multiple other states. Use significantly less water from the Colorado River. There are critical drought issues here. We agreed as California, we would do that. We, the plan as it is burns a million.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Could I have Chris Alonso come on up? And Chris, you'll be followed by Danielle Rodesheimer.
Excuse me, um, Amber Clark, can you re, I can't catch these names because of the noise. Could you repeat, please? That's, I'm trying to be fair to everyone and I would like to hear who's coming up to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I, uh, as a, live on Manzanita Drive, uh, and actually in the house adjacent to the annexed building. And this is a pretty scary project with, uh, thoughts of a 20-foot retaining wall adjacent to my property. It's already quite a noisy spot and I think that if we have a larger pool with two simultaneous practices at the same time, we can expect considerably more noise. Secondly, as the father of a high school student, I do wish we had more resources to sustain the academic excellence of the school. And, uh, lastly, sort of minor note that, um, if we lose the walkway up to Manzanita, there's a lot of people parked there for both the school and to get to this, the swimming pool and the tennis courts. So it's another 20 spots lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. Um, I was just thinking the current speaker and waiting for the audience to finish clapping so that we can all hear who's coming next. Danielle Rodesheimer, if you could come forward and then you'll be followed by Gary Kasek. If you could hold your applause or any type of indication after the person's done speaking, the board would really appreciate that.
Hello, um, I'll try and get as much in as I can here. Um, so I am, I'm an athletic booster as well as an active member of the PTA and PTA board. So as well as a parent of two high school students, I am on campus and in that front office a lot. So for maybe some of the community members who their students have moved on recently or perhaps a long time ago, you're not aware, um, of what is actually transpiring. There is one meeting room in that front office for all student and staff matters that maybe seats 10 to 12 snugly. It's right up in the front where everyone with any business walks in and walks by. So if there's any sensitive student matters going on, disciplinary, social, emotional, um, 504s or IEPs, it's right out on display for everybody to see, which is a little unfair and insensitive. Uh, and I know that maybe it's for those who went a while ago, you're, there's a significant increase in mental health issues. Um, so that space is used in that way for significantly more than it was perhaps even five years ago. As a PTA member, trying to struggle to find space to meet, um, I'm not asking for our needs necessarily, but I'm, I bear witness to the classes that are piled on top of each other in that library space where they're using the rooms around side. There's trying to have like career and career, career and college center having stuff. And then there's, um, MUN and they're all piled on like this. Also, um, that library is also used as an alternative testing location for those who have accommodations. And then you also have classroom being conducted while somebody's trying to take a test. It's a little difficult. Lastly, the pool. I don't have a student involved in aquatics, but, um, I, I, I see some issues that if you continue to use the current footprint, then where does everybody go in the meantime while it's under renovation? Not only students, but also for the community who use it for exercise or, or for, um, lessons.
Thank, thank you, Danielle. I'm going to cut you off. Sorry. Uh, Danielle, thank you. And Gary Kasek is coming forward and following Gary Kasek will be, uh, Jeff Rodesheimer. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Gary Kasek. Um, difficult way to exchange data where we're doing it tonight with written questions and answers that are not connected to the questions. What I requested several times, and I know you thought this was a better way, was to allow somebody to come to the mic, ask maybe five minutes of questions, have an exchange back and forth so that everybody can hear how the answers trigger different questions. That being said, we'll do what we can. Uh, I'd like to focus a little bit on wants versus needs. I keep hearing that we need a 50-meter pool. I heard one explanation and that was so the two teams could practice at the same time. That's the only valid explanation I heard. All the rest was it's busy, it's crowded. I live by the pool. I can tell you at times it's minimally used. At times it's a little crowded. There may be three to five smaller kids swimming in a lane at the same time. Swimmers tell me that's normal. I can tell you there's a lot of time that's unscheduled or a lot of time that there's just a pool that's completely vacant. Maybe it's a scheduling issue because if there's all that open time, you've given 70% of the pool to the city use. You own 30% of the pool. You use 30% of the pool and you're talking about building a bigger one. You've got a joint use agreement that's up in September. Take the other 70% back and now you've got 70% more pool time than you had before. We're a small community and somebody have said we're a small community. It's a small high school and it's a small geographic footprint that that high school fits on. You don't have to have everything in that footprint. You don't have to have everything in that footprint. Pool doesn't need to be there. The district offices don't need to be there. You cannot compare Laguna Beach and the high school to other neighboring communities that are two, three and four times the size. Make it fit with what you have. Thank you.
Jeff Rodesheimer, please come forward. Let me repeat the name. Jeff Rodesheimer, please come forward. You'll be followed by Walter Stender.
Hi, I'm Jeff Rodesheimer. I have two kids in high school and I won't repeat what my wife said a minute ago. I'm for looking forward in this community. I would have liked to have been around in 1990 when they were contemplating moving the pool, which was moved in 93, when our school enrollment was 638. Yet thankfully, they did invest in the school in 1993 and made the improvements so that 30 years of students can enjoy what was developed. I think what we have here is a case of NIMBY. I think if you were to build the pool somewhere else, you're going to have another set of neighbors and you're talking about that as well. I would encourage you all to continue to look long-term with this project. You spend this money, think about office buildings that are open concept, can be reconfigured and reused. And I am also for larger spaces for outdoor activities. And as far as parking goes, I think we do need more parking in this community. When you live in an area that's used for parking, you don't know what it's like to try to find parking to go to that area. I can speak from experience. I live in Woods Cove. There's a lot of people park in my neighborhood. I don't have worried about parking though because I have a driveway. So again, I guess my point would be I encourage this district to think long-term. Think about how your education will look 30 years from now. Think about our needs as a community and our schools are a significant need for this community. Thank you.
Sorry for the mic, Walter Stender, and that was the last comment card I received, so that will complete our public comment after Walter.
Thank you all very much. I don't envy you. I am a commissioner. I am a public commissioner and it's a very complex issue that you guys are addressing. And my main point is I worked on capital projects and facilities projects all over the world and it takes intense rigor. I'm a little bit concerned because I hear us talking about steps and things like this. I did ask a question that could be answered, which is where is the cost benefit analysis? Where is the analytical tools used to develop these needs and have, have they been done yet? So the, the, the complex issue you're going to be faced with, everybody has an opinion. I don't care how many, you'll never get a, a alternative. It's going to be everybody's idea of optimization. But the key thing to me is that you have to have the rigor upfront. And one of the most fundamental things is, again, has been mentioned many times is needs. Do we need a district office, period, which is the 20,000-foot view, yes or no? Very, very small. Do we need it at all? It's probably one of the smallest districts around here. Should it just be combined with Newport Beach or somewhere else? So shared opportunities here. Another fundamental question, lease versus build. Lease versus build. All facilities plans and the planet do that analysis right upfront, right? Upfront, lease versus build. There's office space all over the place around here and there will be for a long time to come, believe me. If you don't believe me, go call the Irvine Company. They'll tell you how many decades of space they have right now. So these are the things I really hope that you do take advantage of now because I think this work needs to be done. Clearly some option has to be put into place here. The community does need some of the things that we're talking about. I don't have the analytical data to back it up. Hopefully you do, but I do believe ultimately we need a pool and an approved pool and so forth and so on. I live right on top of the, where your proposed buildings are. I can guarantee you, you don't need parking. I'm an analytical guy. I'm a statistician. I'm an engineer, businessman. I can prove to you.
Thank you, Walter, very much. Appreciate it.
That was our last public speaker. Thank you. We're at the next portion of our meeting, which is our opportunity to discuss. So who would like to lead off?
Sorry, President Vickers, I couldn't hear you. What did you say?
This is our time to begin a discussion, which we have not had an opportunity to do to date on any of these conceptual plans, alternates, options. And that can still include questions, but it's our time to, to discuss and say, I guess, any opinions that we have. And hopefully we can have some, have some requests that give some guidance for going forward. Again, we're not deciding on anything. It's still, in my mind, I don't know if the rest of you concur, it's still a long process. But where we are to date and what we, what we need, at least I would say, I have some things that I will ask that I need to help make the decisions going forward. So go ahead with that.
Okay, I'll be the guinea pig. I'll start with the, the pool. I, I believe we need a better pool. I feel very badly for the students who get home late, young students, or don't even get to play water polo or be, or practice because of the late, the late time. But I don't think, I, I also want there to, it to be continuous that kids who are playing water polo now don't have to stop for next year because we're building a pool. I think we need another location for the pool. And as we talked about, or I brought up before, I really think the area at the bus barn should be explored. I think with, looking at $150 million, maybe there is even some other property out in the canyon that we could purchase. And then that it doesn't, part of that, I hate to see Park Avenue under construction for years. And I worry about the, the safety going up and down. And I was there in the fire with a whole busload of second graders coming down with fire on both sides. I know what that is. I also worry about the, having a traffic study done. I mean, how is that going to affect just day-to-day traffic if there isn't any emergency? Digging out for a pool and all that cement trucks, et cetera, it, it just sounds overwhelming. And if we do it bit by bit, that's years that it's going to take. I also am looking at, I, I like, I think we should explore the idea of the other gym and see if maybe we could do something with that that would save costs and still have space. The, the counseling space, I, I would like to have a lovely social, emotional center for our students. I don't think it, I think it should be more of a joint use space that maybe students, some students could do counseling and have it during the day. But I really think our counseling services, we need to have some that are after school and in the evening. From talking to families, that makes a lot more sense to them because their students don't really want to miss school. They don't want to miss their, you know, AP World History class to go to counseling. It would be much better after school and if we could do that and have it joint use, then, you know, two sets of people could use it. Instead, we could have one building more or less instead of two. I like Mr. Ryan Bonick's neighborhood plan. I think we need to really look at the guidelines to be good neighbors. We want to set an example of being good neighbors and that means listening and compromising. So anyway, I'll stop there.
President Vickers, could I make a, um, did you start again? Can I make a suggestion to the board? Maybe we can frame our comments on each component of the plan that was presented and give each board member a chance to speak once. I loved all the information you shared. It was a lot because we jumped around and I wanted to hear maybe more what each person thought on a particular topic without going through all of what we thought about the whole plan. I don't know if that would be fair to say maybe one comment and go down.
Yeah. So one of the difficulties I'm having is there's just so much here that I could comment on. And there's also a number of different options to go through. One of my thoughts was for me, it would be useful to think, even if it's briefly, about the relative benefits of each of the options. And that also I think needs to include dispensing with the constant questions that come up about all the alternate spaces. So St. Catherine's continues to come up. My understanding is that's not a viable option. The bus, because there's not enough space there is what we've.
Excuse me, this is the board's time to discuss, please.
Yeah. So we've had discussions about St., we've had discussions about St. Catherine's, the bus, the post come up. I don't know what other possibilities there are. I just feel like make, perhaps on the question and answer, the, the fact page on the school board thing.
The FAQs, what, on the FAQs?
Yeah, on the FAQs, perhaps we can respond to those, those possibilities so that we can get some clarity about it. But in terms of these, I have a lot of thoughts about different options, but it's harder for me to talk about them because it's difficult to weigh the relative benefits of these different options. So, you know, I wonder like.
Would we just start with the pool, maybe?
Well, I.
Exactly.
May I make a suggestion that for me, over, what overrides a lot of this is I need some cost information. I know that we can't get definitive cost information, but I, I, as I look at this, I need to know what it would cost to move the tennis courts. I mean, I need to know the ballpark figures, but we need to, I think, evaluate the cost benefits and, and we don't have that information. So that's something I would like to request, that it's very hard for me to, to give any specific direction without that kind of information. We need to, if the parkings, if we didn't put a, an, any elevated parking in, what cost does that take away? Because I will know for me, one thing I was told by various neighbors is they don't mind everybody parking in front of their houses. So it, you know, that seemed to be something that, that I had not heard before. Over the years, I'd heard that there was a problem with always having that done, but I was told differently. So, you know, things that we can then, some of these plans really reduce what was first presented in the first concept plans. But I need to know basically what cost savings we're looking at because that cost savings then are passed on if we, you know, need assistance from taxpayers with financing, that's significant. If we can do it with, it's a 10-year plan. So that's another consideration is the district office and the high school office were at the bottom of the list when we basically stopped. And that's similar, that we went back to building P, has been referred to, that was in the plan with the bond money, but there wasn't enough money, so it had to wait. The same with the district office and the high school administration office. They were in the, the waiting to be considered. And then other things have come up since then, but I think it's, you know, we obviously saw an increase in costs, but building P was part of an original plan. So we can plan, but we also have to decide what comes first. And then, you know, there's a lot of, I just need, we talk about interim housing. Interim housing would also be for our district office folks when that building's under construction. Interim housing would also be where does a tennis team have matches? Because they have to have the courts together and right now, my knowledge, that doesn't exist in our town. I mean, it's, I want to consider all of that, which makes it very difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, Kelly.
It's okay. I just thought in, in order for this, I, I hear your concern, President Vickers, but I do think there are things that this board can come to an agreement on to move this process forward. Let me give you an example. We heard about potentially an option to move the pool to a location not at the high school. So does this board support moving the high school pool and all of the aquatics athletes to another location? I for one, don't support that, but if there was a majority that said, I support that, I'm fine with the high school athletes traveling to go to their own pool or to go to their own tennis, then we would have some agreement on some of the fundamental things that we're trying to determine. And that would come even before cost because we can look at a million options, but until we know what we, what we're comfortable with on a board and where our non-negotiables are, we're just spinning our wheels. So that's the question I posed to the board. I'd love to hear a response. Or do we want to move the pool to the canyon or St. Catherine's or any place that's not on Park Avenue? Because I'd like to see the kids walk there.
The other option, if I can answer a little bit of that, I, from my understanding, the canyon has its own specific plan. So that would be one of my questions to answer that question about using what currently is our bus location, which of course houses all the buses. But that's been some of the issues with the, I forget the acronym for the term of the canyon residents, but there is a plan for that and what's allowed in the canyon, which something like that might not fit in the plan. That's a city plan. That's not our plan. And the, but as far as your basic question, my support would be to keep the, what the high school students need at the high school location. Because when we had softball in El Moro, we transported the kids to El Moro because we can't ask them to drive themselves.
Thank you. So I'm just trying to get some consensus because we can start to take things off the table. So if President Vickers wants to keep the high school pool adjacent to the high school, if there's another member, I do, then we can move forward with some of those things.
Been forward keeping the pool where it's at as far as an allocation, so the kids who walk.
Now, if you want to know my complication to that is I believe it's time for the city to step up and provide additional pool. Where they decide to, where they decide to put that pool. And if, and if we looked at the timing, if the urgency was for the city to meet that need, then we do our pool after that pool is available.
I, I agree with you, Mrs. Vickers, that we need to know where the, where the city's at. We have a joint meeting with the city on the 6th of June and I think they need to tell us as far as what their, what their thoughts are about the pool and the percentage of time they're going to want in the future. They're going to need to tell us about parking as far as if they want us to have additional parking or not. And we've, they've canceled every meeting that we've had for over a year. So I'm hoping that we will be meeting on the 6th, but it seems that we're low priority in the community. But we really need to have these questions answered by the city council before I think we go forward on a lot. But I like Kelly's way of going issue by issue and I think, I think it's been decided that we will keep the pool where it's at.
I think we have to have some guardrails. So if this board says, no, we don't support, and again, the city could build a second pool. That would be great, right? That would be lovely, but we still need a pool that meets regulation size. We don't have that today. We still need a pool that's got more than the lanes that it does.
Kelly, I see that as, I don't see that as a separate issue. See, I, what I see, what we've been hearing in these recent months is the city has not stepped up. They've been asked for years to provide an additional pool because of what Member Perry referred to. The huge number of kids that are now in the city, through the city rec department are in the age group water polo programs, starting, I think, about age four. And then they're up there late at night and it isn't conducive with a school child and getting home. So the city has not responded to their community need and I see it as best, definitely going hand in hand.
I, I do, but we still don't have a, a pool for our high school athletes that meets the regulation size. Just today, even if it's five more yards or eight more yards, what we have today doesn't meet the students' needs. So we have to do something. The city might also have to do something. But if we can agree that we're not doing that something, at least our school board is not doing that something in the canyon or at St. Catherine's, then we can start to hone our focus.
I don't disagree with that, but I'm saying that there's another way to do it over our, over our 10-year planning, which is, which for me involves the city stepping up. So because we need to redo our pool, but we need a place for our swimmers and our water polo kids to be while that takes place.
So one of the reasons I was asking the question to begin with is that these options, which Roger nicely pointed out, the, the relative differences between them, like keeping the tennis courts or whatever, but there are options that include, for example, an additional 25-foot pool. Or, you know, there are options that are for a 40-foot pool on the tennis courts and another that keeps it in the existing place. There are, you know, my preference would be for the high school athletes to have the pool there. But it's very hard for me to weigh the different options without having a more general understanding of how to weigh the, the costs and benefits of those different options. So for example, one thing that became clear from some of the commentary tonight was that it would be very disruptive to put the pool in the existing spot, which would essentially cancel all swimming programs for two years. So that could potentially, how long, however long the pool takes, that is one potential cost of keeping the pool in the existing place. Those are the kinds of things I'm trying to think about in terms of weighing the different options because it's a little bit difficult to, to think in relative terms. But I do agree that we should keep the pool by the high school. But I also haven't heard a viable option for other places it could be in our, in any, in any of our meetings.
I also agree we need, should keep a pool by, across from the high school, but I think we need another pool and not in that location.
I also agree we need should keep a pool by across from the high school, but I think we need another pool and not in that location.
Which I think I agree with with everybody, but I don't want our boards. I don't want us to forget our needs and our responsibilities to our students. And we know our pool doesn't meet their needs. So we know we need to decide what we're going to do in our location. And the city, like we could say, just hypothetically, board follow with me. When we meet on June 6th, maybe we have two options that we like. Right? And that this board says, you know, I could support, I could get behind both of these options. And we've looked at a lot. We looked at the ones in the March 23rd session. We've looked at, I don't know, four here. And we could ask the city. Is there an option, for example, the 25 and the 38 together that they want to do together? That's what our June 6th meeting is for. Or what their timeframe might be to locate another site and plan for a pool, additional pool in there, but we still have to meet our students' needs. We cannot wait. We can't wait another 10 years till that the city catch up and build another pool.
I'm not I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that they're way behind and I and I'm hearing some of these with properties that they have access to. I don't know. I mean, I just think we need to ask those questions and I also need to know the costs that we're looking at. But I am very, I would just, when you want opinions on the options, I'm very uncomfortable with adding another pool with the concept of intensifying use. Because that then we're taking on to me the city's responsibility and we're putting that into an existing space that that is working right now. But it but when you add a second pool, it there is, in my mind, there's going to be more use because there's another pool for a whole nother group of people to be in at the same time.
Are you opposed to waiting until after our meeting with the city?
I think the city is one component to it, to President Vickers' point. She, you know, she knows that she doesn't want to intensify the use on our property, and that's important to hear. I think we need to move together versus creating more options. And adding the city and what the city needs or wants and what their desires are into into our planning before we have some direction, I think, could complicate it. For example, it would be great.
Separate that when we've already, when we've got a joint use. Because we currently have a joint use.
I'm aware of that. Thank you very much. And so we have a, we have a lot of different options right now, and I just, I kind of want to use this time to hear what everybody thinks, what my fellow board members think of some of these options, so we can start to move together towards consensus instead of waiting for more financial figures, waiting for city input. We can start to discuss it so we know what what each other's concerns are and move together. That's what I'm trying to get to.
I think we are discussing it, but I what I'm feeling is that obviously you and I don't agree. So that's going to be a sticking point, because I think I said the information I would need to really get down to, you know, more way to move forward, and I'm not comfortable without that information. And it's financial and it's city.
Yeah.
Those developments, so we don't have that.
As a counterpoint, President Vickers, if you had, if you said in this meeting, I I don't agree with an option that has a 25 and a 38 meter because it intensifies use. And there were other board members, there was a majority of board members that also felt that way. And I would scratch that off my list of consideration because it's the board's majority, but I'm trying to get to that. So I know how you feel, but how does everybody else feel?
So I'm trying to say that I can't tell you how I feel because I do not understand how to weigh the options. For example, some people have expressed concern about not having a shallow end to the pool. Other people have said we should not have a shallow end to the pool. There are options, there are issues about each option that I think we need to briefly or in a longer term discuss so that we can figure out which of these options we're most behind. Okay, so I feel like it's jumping the gun a little bit to say, pick two options. We need to go to the city. We need to know what we stand behind. I can't tell you that. I can tell you which one looks the nicest to me in term, you know, I'm a swimmer, my kid's a swimmer. You know, he's not on the water polo team or anything, but you know, I I I could look at it and say, you know, this looks really cool and it seems to address the concerns of the person who's right next to it. But that's not like a real discussion about what needs to, what needs we need to have met by the particular pool option. Right? So that's what I'm trying to figure out how to weigh.
You need, you need more information.
Well, it's not, we could discuss it now. We have two 40 meter pool options. One of them is in the existing place. The other 40 meter pool option is moved over so that the tennis courts are moved. What are the relative benefits of those two options? So that we can think about whether or not one makes more sense than the other. Because I can't, you know, it would help, it would facilitate sort of thinking about which makes the most sense to the board.
That's where I said I need cost information.
Well, the problem with cost info, I totally agree with you, except you can't really get good cost information until you sort of know the scope of the project and how you're going to stage it and when the construction might start. It's really, it's it's.
Well, there's ballpark figures is what I asked for.
Yeah.
Ballpark figures and, you know, tennis court costs and that was a major project. I did that before, obviously, you know, compared to the 30 year pool cost, I mean, that's it's.
Right. But if we don't have it to tonight, we could talk about the relative benefits in terms of the physical space and then get cost estimates that might weigh into our decisions, right? So if there is, for example, if there's a, if if there's agreement that we should not build where the existing pool is, or we should build in the existing pool for the various reasons that have come up, now would be a good time to decide that. And then we could know the relative costs that factor into different options and we could choose between the options by saying, well, we decided that we did not want to. I'm not saying that's what we're deciding. I'm giving you a hypothetical. We did not want to build on the existing pool, therefore the 40 millimeter pool option would have to be this one. And then we could weigh that against another possible option that meets physical space requirements based on the cost estimate. Does that make sense? That was a long.
It does. And I think we've seen this board has seen a lot of cost estimates. It's not like we have not seen the scale of the projects that we are considering and to the entire community, we are aware of the scale of the projects we are considering. So we have seen many numbers on what parking structures and moving tennis courts and new pool construction costs. We have seen the cost of building pools. We've looked at them all in Orange County. We know and have researched every pool that has been built at a high school in Orange County over the last 20 years. Okay, we know all of that information. The question is, what kind of student needs are we trying to address and what are we comfortable with as a board? I think it's a great question. If we have a majority consensus, we don't want the kids in high school to drive to a different pool, to leave Park Avenue. Or, and I would say for pool or tennis, right, permanently. Then the next question would be, do we want to displace our aquatics program for a year? We do not have in our district. Unlike Fullerton with six pools, unlike Huntington Union with six pools, six high school pools, we do not have the ability to go to a neighboring high school in our district with priority and put our aquatics programs there for a year. That's a major concern of mine. Okay, in Irvine, they have four 50 meter pools. If they need to repair one or build a new one, they get to go to their next friendly high school. The facilities director is the same, the athletic directors are colleagues, and they work it out. We have already heard from our athletic director and our parents that is near to impossible to even find a game site to host a game. So I am worried for our students, for our aquatics programs, for the future, not just for that year, but what happens in the four or five years after. When we displace aquatics for an entire year.
So I think we have some consensus that, number one, we want the pool to be close to the high school. Number two, what I heard or have heard is we want the existing pool to stay in operations during the time it's being constructed. So we need to have a pool that is built lower down and that that's what I I think I've had heard a consensus on.
That's my point of view, but I'd love to hear other people's views too.
The first part, not the second part. I don't, I don't have the information to to give a consensus on that. And I also within would ask a further question. I know the times have changed. I know the numbers in the program have changed. And I know community has use has changed because the old pool was not available to the community. So we took them someplace. I don't know where we took them. I don't remember where we took them. But we obviously, we did, we did because we didn't disband our programs.
How many years ago was that?
30, right? If you've heard 30 years ago. Yes, I know times are different, Kelly, but it's still. You know, I can't, it's very hard for me to say make the decision based on that. When we're looking at a 10 year facility plan with where I, what I hear and you say is that would, that would be your first project before district office, before high school administration, that that is the need that has to go immediately first. And so that, I think, makes a difference in in the comments that you're making.
So ju- just to provide clarity on, we've been talking and I know, Dr. Selby, others, talking to athletic directors and other places for to find water. It's extremely challenging. We're finding it harder and harder for our programs to find that space. We're being told that we we had a conversation with the contractors that basically do 80% of the pools in the state of California through Department of State Architecture. Basically said, it's going to be harder and harder for you to find any spaces for your students outside of, if you shut your pool down, it it's just going to be really challenging. And so I think that has to be a recognition that it that is based on the feedback we have received and what we're experiencing now. So regardless of when, when the work transpires, whether it's five years from now, whatever it might be, the amount of water available for our students to access is extremely challenging and our coaches have expressed that already. So for our current program as it as it stands. In terms of tennis, I want to be very clear. We do have courts within our community that we can access and our students can play matches away for several years if necessary. However, they'll have courts in town to potentially practice on. We can work with the city on that because we do have tennis courts that are available to us. So that's something we've been talking about. We recognize that would be a challenge, but we've, those are things you can mitigate throughout the process, but.
But not for the matches.
But not for matches. You need six courts possibly for matches. That being said, again, you're displacing potentially a pool program for a longer period of time. Some of the pool statements that were made around taking shorter periods of time, there are a lot of assumptions with that. And talking with the contractor, the assumptions of, you know, one, no geotechnical issues, using the same piping, the same buildings. Some of these plans show significant amount of landwork, including retaining walls, et cetera, that need to be moved. I would say a six month build, eight month build, based off what we heard, is not realistic in any way, shape or form. So I want to be really clear. That is not in talking with those that are the experts in this field, who looked at our pool, looked at what we said, then the response from that gentleman was you're better off building it over in that other space. The the deck space is not, is very limited to the, someone saying that that you only need five feet. And while I recognize that that's the minimum, we also store lane lines, goals. We have a lot of things that have to go on the pool deck. And lane lines themselves with at five feet are not going to give us any room to get around our pool. If you go there as it is right now, you recognize that, that we, in order to meet the needs of being able to move forward, there are some limitations. So I think what Member Osborne is trying to point out and and what I think staff kind of need to hear is just some general direction. If it's bring back all these different options with price tags on them, then we're happy to do that. We we just need, staff need to have a better understanding of exactly what it is we're being asked to bring back or questions to be answered, and we're happy to respond to some of those now because I think, you know, Dr. Monteski is saying, there's some things that we should ask right now. We're happy to try to respond to those as well, so we can provide that clarity. But that's where I think we want to end up is we want to be productive as possible to have the have board have all the information they have. And that's why we're all here. So if there are specific questions, then I think the architect is here to address, you know, some of the space questions, you know, what are some of the challenges that we see? I'll point out, you know, we heard feedback from some of our community members about the the bleachers and the way they face in terms of crowd noise, trying to face them away from the, so as people are cheering, they're not cheering right into someone's backyard, facing their backyard. Those are things that, again, if the board gives us some direction around, these are some of the facets we'd like to see when you consider it in terms of just the build. To Ryan's question about the shallow end and deep end, if the board wants us to look at having a shallow end, we can consider that, but understand what the shallow end really is intended for is more city use. And so that will be something that we would need to make a determination, like, do we want to try to build it for and consider having and supporting city, regardless of whether they build another pool or not. Do we, as you as a board, feel an obligation? I recognize work for our focus is nine through 12 at the high school, but but we can't forget that we have students that are your students' age who use the pool. And they they might not be using it through a program we provide. They're using it through a program the city provides. And I think we've had an obligation because we provide the majority of field space in this city. Just go looking out at the field out there, that are, those are our students running around, but not through our programs. And I think we have philosophically and in our city have done a really nice job of working together to provide that support because our space is so limited. So if we could get to, we're staff and feeling like, yeah, there's some questions that might not be answered that we need to follow up on and provide to the board. If there's funds and and things to that nature that we need to provide, that would be helpful for us because we just want to land somewhere where we could come back with something for, that has answered all the questions to the extent that we can, and you have all the feedback that you need to report. So.
Thank you. So that brings me to probably a fairly contentious discussion, but the 40 meter pool that's on the same space. The one issue is that, you know, there, there is a lot of commentary about keeping the pool in the same space and not building it over where the tennis courts are. However, I might be misunderstanding, but I also thought that there were problems with keeping it there, and I want to be clear about it. One is that it disrupts the the aquatics program for quite some time. The second is that it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that those bleachers are the ones that are the most imposing on neighborhood property. Is that, am I right about that in terms of the the concerns that we we had conversation, a comment from somebody about the bleachers backing up to the property? Was it this picture? Okay.
Yeah, so there, right now, there's a a wall that is there, but to the neighbor's credit, if you put the bleachers there and someone's standing, they basically would be probably standing at a height where they would be able to go over the wall.
Okay.
Yes, and then what? But so what, what we're talking about there, to to your point, yes, that would be a challenge. The other is what you noticed too is the annex is gone. And that was a question that was raised around the retaining wall, where the team room is, there would be a retaining wall there that would abut with the with the landscape area, but would abut the other neighbor's concern that it would be basically run up right up to their house as well.
Okay. So there are bleachers right now that are over by the tennis courts. Those don't abut anybody's property though, right?
Correct. The ones that you see on there, that the 40 meter that show it along the drive there, where below, it's below grade there.
Right, which means that on the next option, the bleachers on the 50 meter pool that's moved over there also don't abut anybody's property.
Correct.
Nor, but they would on the 25 and 38 meter pool. Right? Okay. So.
And the 40 meter in that other location, they don't as well. They.
Right. Right. So I mean, I think, I'm not saying that that is completely the basis for a decision. I'm trying to wade through these options and think about the relative merits or problems with each so that we could perhaps rule some of them out. So do we, for example, want to prioritize not disrupting the program? Or do we want to prioritize not moving the pool? That's right? That's a, that's a tough question, but it allows us potentially to rule out or keep one of the options. And that's the, I I'm, perhaps people don't feel ready to do that. Perhaps people just want to say, you know, what their general feelings are because we're not to that point. But I feel like those are the kinds of discussions we have to have in order to come up with options so we can get relative costs and the scope of the plan and and the the amount of time that that particular option will take in terms of construction. So, sorry, I don't mean to be dominating the time.
And and going along with that, I would really like information from a traffic study and a safety study about how all this construction is going to affect Park Avenue.
I I think we're def, I feel very confident that we will receive that and it will be done well, and we we will have that information. I think, I wanted to go back. I want to come to Dr. Malchuski's request that maybe we see if we're ready to decide about whether we want to build a pool in the same location or a new location, not off Park Avenue, because I think we've come to a majority consensus there. But I I did want to say that we, you know, we have this concept of intense. you know, we have this concept of intensification of use that, and I think is an important one. And I think it goes into parking and traffic, remember Perry? So is there consensus on this board that we don't want to intensify the use with two pools? Because I do think that two pools brings recreational swimmers, so you could have a whole different temperature, could have a whole different depth. And that might actually bring more people into the pool versus just expanding the length of it or making it deeper to meet diving and water polo needs. So I'm just curious what my other board members think, because if we wanted to rule that option out, we could, these are our decisions, so.
So I'm actually of two minds. On the one hand, I don't want to increase traffic. I'm not sure to what extent it would because it includes community traffic that's more based around families who are using the pool. So I would need to know more information about that. On the other hand, just philosophically, I'm someone who believes that the schools and community should be closely linked. I think that's how you keep people are supportive of the schools. I think it's how you keep people in the schools, and I think that in a small community, tho- those kinds of linkages are just really important. It's what I write about, it's, you know, that's just important to me. So those are two kind of different things I'm trying to balance. I don't think that we should have a twenty-five-foot pool if it substantially increases traffic and ruins the neighborhood. I'm very sensitive to the needs of people who live in that neighborhood, but we don't actually have that information.
Okay, so you would, you would support keeping this as a viable option, okay? Or at least showing it to the city. I would say that this would require significant.
I would only do it if the city's wanted to support it. If the city's not interested in supporting it, I'm not interested in doing it because it's.
Okay, were there any other board member feedback on that we're looking, I'm specifically referring to the twenty-five meter plus the thirty-eight meter, so the two-pool option?
Oh, well, I, yeah, I actually would prefer to have the larger. I'm just, I guess, I'm just trying to talk through all my.
This is our only chance to members of the public, this is our only chance to discuss this really important topic together, so.
We can't talk about it when we're not in a public board meeting, so that this is where we're doing it.
Quick question, with the thirty-eight or forty-meter pool, could it be separated like the fifty-meter pool could? Could you have, what'd you call them, bumpers or something so you could have two different things going on?
Typically, you wouldn't have a bulkhead in a thirty-eight meter and below. When you get to forty meters, then you can have enough for the water polo course and a swimming course. But typically, you wouldn't, less than that.
But we would need to be forty meters.
Generally, that's the requirement. Oftentimes, if you want to have a movable bulkhead, you would want to have it as fifty meters, but that's the minimum.
So two water polo teams could practice at the same time in a forty-meter pool?
Yes.
Thank you.
So on that basis, I would, I would be willing to discount the twenty-five-meter pool and try and convince the city that that's something that they should consider doing in favor of, you know, the larger.
So for this board, do we want to keep this as an option, this twenty-five, two-pool format, the twenty-five and the thirty-eight? Is there consensus that we want to consider, continue to have that in our choice set of options? Or does anybody feel so strongly that they'd like to take it out so that we're not considering that? And that we're not discussing those opportunities at June sixth? And if we all want time to still discuss it with the city, then that would be the purpose of June sixth. That if many of us are, or a majority of us are significantly opposed to it, then we need to take it out.
I would say that it's, if I was rank ordering these, it would not be at the top of my list. So, you know, it's not an option that I would feel strongly about supporting for traffic reasons and for the benefits that we would get of having a smaller, a larger pool. Which is what this was all about to begin with.
It'd be at the bottom of my list also.
It also creates bleacher problems. So, yeah, I think that is probably one of the two that's at the bottom of the list for me.
So could we go back and decide if we're ready to talk about the concept of building a pool, digging the hole, digging the bigger hole in the same spot, whether we are willing to relocate our athletes? Are we ready to talk about that yet? I know I've already shared vocally mine.
Again, I'm for leaving the old pool in existence while we build a new pool. So that we do not disrupt the students' programs or the community programs. And again, I am for having a frank discussion with the city on the sixth of June, unless they cancel the meeting again as they've done for over a year.
I'm still really considering.
So it doesn't seem like we have a consensus on this board at this point on whether we would want to build a pool in the same location that it exists or a new location. Sounds like Dr. Kelly wants to build a new location so that programs can continue to operate. But other, other board members aren't there yet as that being a high priority.
I do prioritize that, but I would like to know the relative cost and construction time.
Okay, okay. So maybe then what we should do is we should look to have staff bring back one option where the pool stays in the same footprint and kind of know, I think, we only got one option, right? Roger, for the forty in the same footprint?
We do, although we could look at multiple options in that location. We looked at a thirty-eight meter and a forty meter in that location.
Is there any, any reason to go any smaller than what we show here?
I feel like a forty-meter or, you know, forty or fifty-meter pool is probably more appropriate over the longer term.
And then is there another option to compare it to a second option that we seem to gravitate towards? That we can, again, to President Vickers' point, so we can look at some costs and compare.
So it would be useful to discuss for me the relative benefits of the forty-meter pool with the showers that back up to the existing housing there and the fifty-meter pool with the bleachers that are at the street level behind it with the showers up front. Because those are the two options that seem.
You could, I mean, if you think about the fifty-meter and the forty-meter could fit in that same orientation, right? So you could actually fit on, if you're looking at the fifty-meter pool, a forty-meter would fit in that same exact location. So if it's, if there's consensus that that design feature, if, to your point, around having the bleachers along that retaining wall that's already existing and to come back with it or iteration that has a forty-meter in there as well and a fifty-meter and price those out, that has that feature. And that's, that's kind of what I think we're looking for is to not bring back so many options that were, we're still in the same spot down the road. But if that is the feature that many of you agree on, yeah, let's consider the bleachers with the sound going towards the high school, then that would be a feature we would bring back with price, yeah.
So I don't want to sound wishy-washy, but I feel like we should start with those, that possibility. But also just know that these options are there if we need to go back to them because of the relative costs or time of construction or other neighborhood concerns that come up.
Right, and I don't, I, you know, Roger could correct me if I'm wrong, but if you put a forty-meter layout, just the layout and the bleachers first in whatever orientation you have, the cost is probably going to be fairly similar. You know, when you compare the forty-meter with the bleachers, two sets of bleachers versus the fifty-meter with the one set of bleachers.
Yes, it's basically a cost per seat, so it's just a matter of how many seats you want to have, you know, for the pool.
I wanted to make a comment there. We heard a lot of concerns about noise because of how dense our school property is. And I would really encourage us to look at not metal clinky bleachers, to look at poured concrete. They're aesthetically nice, they might be more expensive, but I think they have a much longer lifespan and they're just not as loud. And stuff doesn't drop through. I've heard from many swimmers, stuff drops through. So I don't know if that affects your answer.
I think the other thing to think about is, you know, and you mentioned it just a second ago, is the propagation of the sound in terms of the direction. So just because I'm up against, you know, a wall that's next to a home, if the sound is going away from that, you're actually going to get less sound than if the sound is coming towards my home. So.
One other comment on the, when we're looking at these layouts, fellow board members on the forty and the fifty that they showed us. In the fifty-meter pool, the existing annex stays. So I know member, member Vickers has talked about, how can we demolish less, right? How can we keep what we have? Now, that wouldn't be the building that I would pick to keep, but it does stay in the footprint with the fifty-meter. And then also the people that are used to living around that annex, it's still there. And we haven't pushed tennis courts up, right? We haven't changed the use of that area. And again, it's, the annex is not my favorite building, more of like a glorified portable building that sits on top of a really high retaining wall. But if the fifty-meter pool works here and the annex stays, we demolish less, we keep things kind of in their general places. I would support that more.
Do we still keep the old pool in existence while we're building this new fifty-meter pool? I just can't see where it's at.
Roger, can you take that question in these?
I think, I mean, that's really up to the board. It's going to prolong your overall timeline, so just think about is if you're going to build the new pool, if that's, you know, twelve to fourteen months, not twenty-four, but it's certainly not six. So then you, then you have to build, come back and demolish that existing pool and then build tennis courts. And so that's an additional timeline on top of that, which is probably another ten to eleven months. And so it does change the timeline.
Roger, along with some of the costs, could we also get timelines for the different options?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So do we feel like we have some direction on which of these options the board likes best to bring back? So that we're not looking at costs and timeline on six options plus the three options that we already looked at in March that had cost and timelines on them? Or at least had costs on them? Do we, can we maybe run through that so that, I think, so we have some consensus? Okay. And I'll run through them, it's okay. So we do want to bring back the forty-meter pool in the existing location cost and timeline. There was, there was other people that wanted to continue to look at that. Is that, is that true? Only Dee is shaking her head, so. Joan, did you want to still see that? That's okay, the forty-meter in its existing location, do you want to continue to see that option with a cost and timeline?
A long time, but I, I do think it's, you know, I guess I want to see the other two options, but know that we can come back to this if we need to because of, yeah, so I don't feel like, yeah.
Okay, so you want to see cost and timeline on this option, right? Forty meter in the existing?
Yes, it's not something I prioritize. It's not, it's not, you know, I'm prioritizing for myself the other options, but I feel like we shouldn't close off getting information just so that we know what we're weighing it against.
Okay, that's helpful to know. And then on the next one, we have the fifty-meter pool with the annex stain. And I'd like to see the cost and the timeline on that. I think it meets a lot of needs. Does everybody want to still see that? Okay. The next one has the twenty-five and the thirty-eight. And this seemed like everybody ranked lower. So maybe we don't spend a bunch of time pricing this out until we meet with the city. And if this is a strong interest of theirs and they really want to push this.
And pay the cost.
Then we go down that, okay. Then we have the, thank you for all these options, Roger. Then we have the forty-meter with the annex gone. Does anybody want to see this one again?
I feel like the other fifty-meter one could also be a forty-meter pool. So I don't, I don't like the idea of putting tennis courts all the way back into that area.
Okay, so we can, is there consensus to eliminate that? Okay, good, so that leaves us with two good options and a an option to show the city knowing that it's not the preferred option unless they bring us new information.
Are we comfortable with the fifty-meter, I think to the point, we can price it as both a forty and a fifty, right, roughly? But that orientation is what we were talking about. And then we can also do, to remember Osborne's question, if it's feasible, something other than aluminum bleachers, to determine if there's an opportunity to build some concrete type bleachers against that retaining wall runs along Manzanita. And so that would be another option for us to throw in, is that something we could?
I would say only if it's indicated for noise. I'm not an expert, I'm a layperson in this, looking at paper diagrams. But if it's indicated to mitigate noise, then I think we ought to our community to look at it.
Well, and one of the things to your point, when you go to pools, for example, if you're at Woollett, which is the preeminent kind of Irvine pool, right, it is, they do have kind of that, it's concrete block seating, it's actually really deep because it's amazing enough, as I've laughed about this a little bit. Water polo students and swim students seem to have way more stuff than any other sport I've ever seen in terms of bags. And there's no room on the pool deck to put all that material, so they need a place to put it and they often put it with their parents in the stands. And so having a, my niece play water polo, you recognize the parents are sitting there and they have bags, the students' bags, they have their, all this different stuff. And again, you'd think that they wouldn't because they're in swimsuits and, you know, little hats, but to be honest, may, that's, that's kind of what happened. So I think it does give that a little bit more space into, at your point, member Osborne, students have complained that dust up does fall down. So we can look at that as an option. It may even actually be better for that retaining wall along Manzanita as well as we explore kind of that as a space. I'm not sure how many we could get, but that'll be something that Roger and his team can look at. So we can look at both of those as options.
Can you, when you bring back the options for the forty and fifty in the same place?
Yes.
How will affect the, the different sports as far as, is there, is there a difference as far as utilization as far as for sports, is it better to have the fifty or what are the pros and the cons of forty versus fifty?
The value from what in conversations we've had with their coaches, the ability to have two practices at the same time. Right now, they, they have students in the water, but they can't obviously practice at the same time. Putting the bulkhead in, as Roger points out, in a forty allows you to run both practices. The same is said for a fifty, right? So then you'd be able to do both or have lap swim in one portion of the and, and practice in the other. It's just you get a little extra space, obviously, when you have the fifty-meter versus the forty-meter. But the biggest difference in move is, is really from, you know, the small pool which we currently have to a forty, and then from forty to fifty, the importance isn't as important. It does add some value because there's more space, but it also shrinks your deck space. So that's where I think the consideration has to be kind of factored in is that is the extra ten meters worth the extra ten meters of deck space you're losing now? When we recognize that deck space is a premium in our little footprint, so. Don't know if I answered your question, but I think, you know, there are definitely some, it's just that cost benefit forty, forty to. Don't know if I answered your question, but I think, you know, there, there are definitely some, it's just that cost benefit forty, forty to fifty. From what we're understanding from, uh, feedback from our folks is that, you know, maybe forty would work great with the deck space. Um, if they could fit a fifty, that would work too, but they also are mindful of that deck space concern that they, they all share. Because they just, having it, it's a safety issue too, having all those things out, you know, goals out when the lane lines are in and vice versa.
Another quick question, are the, as far as the tennis courts, are they a regulation distance apart?
Yes, and I don't have that dimension off the top of my head. It's actually incorporated into here, but.
They couldn't be any closer together to take up a smaller footprint.
You actually do have a little bit of leeway on that and you can get them a little tighter. And what I have shown here, this is the, the recommended by CIF and by National, it's a high school body that governs tennis.
I was just looking for some way to pull back a bit from the neighbors. If there's anything on this plan, this plans, where we could pull back.
You can, you can overlap the overflow on each side of the court between those two. And so you can skinny that up a little bit, but not significantly over what you see here. But we can look at that.
Um, Doc, Dr. Valoria, on the, some of those discussions between a forty and a fifty meter. Like I, I feel like sometimes we've gotten away from what we're trying to do, right? We're trying to build a nice pool for the students that they can play their home games in, trying to have lanes that are wide enough. That, you know, kids can swim safely, laps, not have seven, eight kids in a, in a lane. Uh, we're trying to have maybe a new scoreboard, maybe updated locker rooms where they can change and shower safely. Um, I mean, maybe a team room, but a lot of these are also, when you get down into the nitty gritty, should be driven by the programs in the district themselves. I mean, we are really struggling here to, um, you know, just try and figure out what we conceptually want to do, the needs we're trying to meet. But some of these are kind of granular. So it'd be interesting to hear aquatics, coaches, feedback on some of those links. Or trade-offs, like maybe they really want to have a team room, right? I mean, right deck spaces we're sitting here. So maybe those aren't necessarily our decisions to make.
Yeah, so we'll, when we, we'll loop back and talk, um, again, we're, when it's so big. It's hard for them to even weigh in and say, well, you know, but now that we have a little bit better scope, we can go back to them and show them some of these designs. And talk about what are the concerns or issues or things that, again, from a benefit. Would you prefer to have, if we took ten meters off the deck space, you could have a team room or like a small offices or whatever it might be, you know, what you're, uh. So those are all things that we can have those discussions with, because it is going to be, as we all know, and we're tight little space here, it's a give or take, right? You can't necessarily have every little piece, so.
Yeah, I, I want to just one, add one other thing into the public record, because I've received a lot of comments on declining enrollment. And the need for a, a pool program or a larger pool to meet our program's needs. So I, I just want to clarify that the size of our water polo teams, girls team, the boys team. They're the same size as high school teams at Newport Mesa, at Irvine, at other surrounding high schools. They might have double the enrollment, they might have triple the enrollment, but they have the same number of girls' water polo players. So it's upon us as a board, make sure we're supporting those students. I know our total enrollment is lower. We could say the same thing with, with classroom size, right? We have smaller classrooms, but you know, I just, you know, and if you're not into water polo, you think about basketball. I have a son that plays basketball. There's fifteen kids on each of the teams, right? They have three, they field three boys teams, there's forty-five kids in the program. It doesn't matter that we have a thousand kids at our high school or will soon. That's the same size as Dana Hill's boys' basketball program. So we still have, to Dr. Valoria's point, we have these programs. And unless we're going to cut teams and say, no more JV water polo, because we can't fit it in our pools. No more boys freshman basketball, we can't fit it in our gyms. Unless we're willing to do that because we're declining, which I don't think would be in the best interest of the board. Because, you know, we are, we're in a strong financial position. So I just wanted to put that into the record. Our programs are not small. They're highly enrolled and they're enrolled in much larger percentages than our surrounding schools. Even though they have larger um total enrollments. Thank you.
So I think, I think staff feeling pretty confident, is there, can we move to the high school counseling offices? And kind of get some feedback from the board there. I, I recognize there's no cost, but again, um, i- is this, you know, what we, what staff tried to accomplish was um bringing that building back. We have talked about, obviously, right now it looks, again, from a visual looking down, it looks like it's two stories stacked on top. But one of the things that we've talked about is considering using the topography of, of kind of that's, that hillside as we have. Being able to offset the buildings a little bit, because there is space to do something like that, because it then, again, the road does slope there. So we could have that where it's not just straight up two stories, but it is offset a little bit and kind of flows down that, that hillside. But not encroaching far down onto that green space. Um, I think we all, uh, we all really like that tree that's right there. We think it's really nice, just have to say, rather not cut that down, looking back, kind of pulling back and leaving, you know, kind of having the same footprint that we have with the current counseling offices. I- is the board comfortable with us coming back, bringing a price for that, recognizing, you know, we're not, um, you know, that is. The design itself is not done, but the, the basic square footage is, um, we could price off of that, I would expect.
So um, I, I strongly support um structuring, you know, uh renovating or whatever. The right word is the administrative and student counseling center. So this is something that I prioritize in the plans. Um, I obviously um like it better now that it is retaining that corner and doing all of those things. So I just want to um point out that this is something that I think is important and we should price out. Um, and, and uh, you know, think about design issues.
I agree.
I, I, I think the board gave a pretty clear direction last time to scale it back and I really like how you guys scaled it back. I think it meets a lot of the community's um requests not to have it coming down into the triangle corner. And meets a lot of the student needs and the counseling needs and the programmatic needs that are, um, are and have changed um of late. We need those spaces for counseling. We need students to feel supported. Um, I love those green spaces. I think the high school, um, maybe, um, it's because it's been done so well. We have almost all two-story buildings there. You don't know they're two stories until you all of a sudden are at the bottom and you're looking up, right? Because from Park Avenue, many of them appear to be one-story buildings. So I think you could blend this in really nicely and we would be using our space. And I also think, um, you know, we heard a lot of feedback about maybe not trying to move all of the district administration on top of there. I initially thought that was a way to try and save costs, right? To just build two stories there and put our smaller district staff on top of the high school staff. But that didn't seem to resonate with many other, resonate with many other people. So I support this if the rest of the board does.
Is there anything missing that we should add or bring back? I mean, price?
I'd like to know a timeline on construction. I'd like to know interim housing suggestions. Where student classrooms would be taking place when those were demolished. Where the high school staff would be when their workspace is being rebuilt and cost projections.
I guess the last would be um district office. So there's two different iterations, one uh single story. Um, uh, with uh Lot A as Roger mentioned, um, having two iterations in and of itself, right? So you have a two-story, um, a one-story, one's twelve thousand square feet, the other is uh fifteen thousand square feet. Um, and then you have Lot A having, um. There's actually three options within the parking lot to consider. One is doing nothing to it, right? Not, not lowering it, um, exporting, just leaving it as is. Um, and still building the district office. The other would be to, and uh, if you look at Lot A dropping it down. Um, and changing the configuration a little bit, giving a little more level to it, um, which would add the potential to add some more spots to restripe. And then the uh little mini structure piece that has sixty-six spots that, I think Roger mentioned, about two million probably in terms of cost, right? So does the board, what, what's the direction? Come back with a two-story, come back with a single story? Um, price out all these options, because there aren't that many thankfully on this one. Um, so just trying to get some direction.
I would find it useful um to get more information and maybe price out both options. I think that um, uh, very legitimate concerns have been raised about whether or not adding parking spots there. Will create traffic problems. I, I think we don't know enough to answer whether that's true. Um, I also think that there are potentially benefits to having parking spaces there. I, I'm not sure though. So I, I would like to have more information and I think it's easy to, to price out both and, and do a traffic study.
I am, I don't know if I have any interest in the extra parking. We've gone, we've, this is a big project. And it'd be interesting to see it. It might be another interesting area to see if the city is interested in any cost sharing on that. I don't know whether they would be able to use any of it. Um, you know, we, we could go from a hundred and thirteen to maybe two hundred parking spaces. And but we do have less students parking, right? At least right now, you know, I mean, looking forward, things could change. But I could see that um desire to try and disrupt the least amount of aspects of our campus. So that would be an area that I would um prioritize, I guess, kind of dead last.
I'm, I'm less interested in having the city help us to create parking in that spot. Uh, because I, I just feel like it's not a good spot to have a city-owned parking lot, just because it's in the middle of the neighborhood and it's connected to the school. So, yeah, I, I think, if we don't really need the parking and we don't want to work with the city, I, I just can't answer that. I don't have enough information.
We've already shared that on a regular basis when, I mean, it's an open parking lot. So I don't, I don't see any reason to increase it. I mean, it's, but I certainly want, don't want to operate a parking lot for, for other folks.
I agree. I'm not for a two-story parking lot there. I, I don't feel like I have enough information on. And I haven't had enough time to spend on the two options. Uh, just looking at it, I like the lower option, the one-story. It's not, but I could be convinced otherwise.
I think too, some of the district square footage, um, space would be impacted by whether we keep or lose the annex. That is a significant two thousand square feet out of our existing.
Yeah, it, it definitely, um, so if for the single story, uh, twelve thousand square feet, the, the need would be to keep. We would definitely need to keep that annex up in the nineties. Uh, we need the training room. We need that extra square footage. Um, and uh, you know, I think we initially, um, some of the square footages that were tossed out. When the, moving the district office over with the high school was someone in the range of like twelve, twenty thousand square feet. Scaling that back significantly, obviously, to twelve thousand, but we still will need that extra uh training space and for those um. And those extra offices for sure. So if it was two-story, that would be something we could consider kind of moving away from. And again, if you go back to, we had the feasibility study, we have all the layouts for these spaces in terms of needs. So we can, we can reshare that with the board again. So you have it in the weekly update this week. Um, that initial feasibility study that just showed kind of some of the programming, obviously, single story, whatever. We can, we can make it work within what we, whatever the confines of the walls are, but that was laid out. And, and it did show, as I think staff mentioned earlier, um, the tech office uh showing that office. Where it still kind of remains because all the home runs are all in there and then kind of building from there. Um, but I think uh, one of the questions that Dr. Kelly had mentioned that he was concerned around was the feasibility of maintaining our original building, um, that we're housed in. Really, is it feasible to keep that and then blend it across into that lower building? Um, that was back in the feasibility study back in September. Um, well, this, we started this larger conversation, um, seems like eons ago. But uh, so those are things that we, we will have to kind of bring back, but we'll share the feasibility study, because I don't know that you have seen it. Uh, it's something that we did, um, that had moved programmed it all for different functions. Um, in different spaces to meet the needs of uh both community and, and uh district office needs. So the twelve thousand will be a little bit scaled back, but I think we can, we definitely could make it work. So if we're comfortable, I think we have pretty good direction on bringing back costs and.
Uh, Mr. Dixon, we did get a comment on um looking at buy, build versus lease. So with this square footage kind of determined, since we know what square footage we need, could we have some preliminary information on whether that's even an option in our city? One of the priorities would be that you would have adjacency to our schools and our principals. That's been kind of a long standing way that we've operated, um, but we should at least consider it, I think.
So we've been looking at uh locations to lease within the city. Obviously, finding something um of this square footage with parking. Um, really does not exist. Uh, the closest that uh was for lease. Um, that is currently in kind of final, our understanding, because we did reach out, was the former um pharmacy downtown. Uh, that is uh my understanding. We did reach out to the owner of that building and they're in the process of finalizing someone to lease that space. Um, it was, what was this cost per square footage, Ryan? Do you recall? Was it three dollars and ninety cents a square foot? Somewhere in that range. And it still didn't have adequate, it only had twenty parking spots and we need parking spots for another four, another twenty people.
And those are shared parking spots.
Well, yes, with the bank, plus um, uh, uh, spaces for people to come, who are coming for trainings or coming for meetings or whatever it might be. So as we know, the downtown right there is very impacted.
Would take a lot to fix it up. I mean, it's a big open space.
Open space. Um, so there'd be significant costs associated with that. And then there are a, a few other buildings that are available, but nothing of the scope of ten thousand square feet. That's, that's a very large space. Um, so we looked at, could you break it apart into five thousand square foot locations and how many of those exist within the city? Um, and again, it is limited. There are not a lot of spaces that are to that size. Uh, there is one at Big Bend, um, uh, that has been for lease. It's five thousand, it's over five thousand square feet. Um, with I think about twelve parking spots, something like that. Um, again, uh, very limited. Obviously, we, we're talking about breaking up the spaces for long-term leases and if that was a long-term interest. Um, that would be, uh, obviously, we'd have to kind of look into. There really is not a ton of, of for lease space. We've been, I looked regularly with staff just to kind of look to see what's out there. Um, have, had some conversations with, you know, realtors to say, are, are you aware of, you know, spaces that are coming in for lease? And um, there are, it's just, there isn't a lot, so.
And I think that I was um also go through planning, any kind of a use of a, of a leased facility?
Yeah, that's actually a retail, so that would, that would have to be reused, rezoned, change, a change in rezoning for the, you have to go to the, um. If it's zoned for something like that, we would have to probably go to the city and ask them for an exemption. So, but yeah, we, we are looking at all of those as options, right? So considering, looking at all those different pieces and kind of tracking that so that we're feeling like we have exhausted, you know, what might be out there. Um, uh, but uh, as we all know, parking is quite the challenge in some.
I have that information, Jason, if you still want it. It was three dollars and ninety-five cents per square foot, you know, the triple net lease. About ten thousand six hundred square feet, which is in the neighborhood of forty-two thousand dollars a month or about five hundred or four thousand dollars a year for that property to lease.
Since it, it appears that this is going to be a problem to try to find space to leave. Could we stay where we are and maybe look at some of the other options? Like using that second gym or um looking at building above the bus barn or something that we have control of. So we're not moving and leasing somewhere. We're building something and then have an alternate use for what we're leaving.
For sure. Um, but I, I go back to the initial conversation that we had when we did the feasibility study. It was the board direction was not to look at the district office at the bus barn. So we didn't do that. So if the board's shifting that, that we want to consider that as a little potential location, we can, we can definitely look into the feasibility of that. But we were, but direction at that time from the board consensus was not to do that. So if you're changing, changing that, please, we need to know if that's a, a direction you want to go. I will say, don't, just remember, for those who've been out there, if you've been at the batting cages, parking is very limited. Again, what we're going to is parking and having the buses there while also at the same time accommodating forty to sixty cars um on a daily basis. um, on a daily basis. I don't know that that's feasible there, but that would be something that we obviously could have, Rena Roger, look at and, and have as a consideration.
You're talking about a, a use use or an interim use? I mean, I don't know what your question was about actually locating it there.
I think that's what you were mentioning was two stories. That would mean it would be a permanent.
Oh, I see.
Um, there is parking there, city parking, and maybe an agreement could be made with them.
There's no parking outside, not at the bus barn.
Kind of a crock, had a corner across.
Then you would have to cross the street.
You would have to cross the street.
Yeah, um, but I, I'm confused because it looks like we are just able to keep the district office where it is and renovate it and change the space of it. So is there a need to move it?
Well, we wouldn't have to lease something else, but also instead of, possibly the district offices could be used for our social emotional space or something like that instead of doing such a, another big, um, building on the high school campus.
I, I think there, I think we had consensus that we liked what was shown. Originally in our, um, March twenty-third meeting, we talked about moving district administration to a second story above high school administration and that freed up space to rearrange pool and tennis. But we've gone away from that with this plan based on a lot of the community feedback we got to try and move less stuff around. And so the district office is staying where it is. The parking could potentially stay exactly the same, unless there were people that wanted more parking spots. And, but we do need to remodel it. So it's not moving anywhere in the, in the, in the plan unless there is another idea out there.
But we're not talking about remodeling it, we're talking about getting it and building something new.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I think another thing that's confusing is that people who have been in this community a long time think of that district office as being on the campus of the high school. People who are newer see the district office as being across the parking lot and separate from the campus. Because back in the old days, someone just explained this to me earlier, there were classrooms across the street. There was more of a campus across the street. I don't perceive that space in the same way. I'd, to me, it's not like, why do you want the district office on the campus site? Because most of the high school classes and everything are now across the street. So we, yeah, so I think that that's part of the confusion in terms of how we talk about it. Um, I, I don't feel like that's on the campus. And I thought, it, it seems reasonable to just not disrupt and move to a different place and try and lease. So I'm fine with it. They're renovated. Um, it, it seems cheaper not to have to.
I'd not heard that, that it was considered part of the campus. I've not heard that before. The old classroom was where, where the pool is now, and so it was definitely distant from that. That's interesting because I've not ever, I've not, I have, I have not happened to have heard that. But the other, you know, the other was basically a lower grade school. And then after the other schools were opened, then they used it as, as high school when.
Again, it's sad that, um, the city would not allow us to have part of, uh, the St. Catherine's property. Uh, that's something I had pushed for, written about and thought it would be a great place to, particularly in the interim to move the administration offices there instead of, um, she's put the, uh, the, uh, fire department administrative offices in, in, in most of the offices over there, which, uh, makes no sense. But that would have been just an ideal thing for us and we, we, we tried, but we couldn't get any budget from the city.
Well, except when Roger showed us that we would take almost the entire facility. So we knew the city wasn't going to go for that.
So one of the things that we've been talking about again, from an interim housing, because when you're thinking about any of these projects from a district office perspective, um, displacing the, the district office, um, you know, there to remember Perry's point, you know, would there be an opportunity for us even in the interim to drop some portables maybe in the place of where the, these are options. So hopefully the baseball community doesn't come out. I'm just saying that you could take the batting cages down and put some, some short-term, um, portables there to offset again, uh, the temporary housing needs if, if and when the district office was to, to be done. So we're considering all of those things as well as, you know, if worst-case scenario, moving, uh, I know, uh, fellow superintendent, they had to take, you know, and move five departments into five different school sites, uh, as their district office was being renovated. So those are things that we can do in the short term, but that, that could be a potential option to examine. Um, if, and just limited amounts of, of folks, we can't obviously put everybody there, but we could put some, um, uh, potentially in, in that sort, sort of area. So we're thinking about anything to your question, um, Jan, about what are we doing for interim housing con, ideas and that sort of thing. We're processing and looking at some of those, but we, we didn't want to get too far ahead because we don't know what the scope was. And then we would come back with, you know, some just general kind of phasing conversations around some of these things because you can't do it all at one time. So what makes sense in terms of phasing? So we'll, we'll talk about some of that and bring that back. But I feel like we've landed in enough space now where we have some direction. My next question is, in, in what format does the board wish to have this? Did they wish to have it as a dedicated, uh, additional study session? Should we look for a date and time that we're looking, you know, how soon does the board wish us to bring these back? Um, and is it at a regular meeting as just a general update info my item or do we wish to have another study session?
You have opinions? I'd like to make it as open as possible as far as community, attending, community input, hearing the comments. I just want to make sure whether that's, you know, study session as opposed to an update at a meeting.
Yes, I agree with President Vickers, separate it from a, a regular agenda. Our agendas are so full and require a lot of reading and preparation. And they require four to six hours out of each of us. Um, so I think we definitely need to separate them. I'd also request that we avoid the dead week, um, that we already have, um, at the high school. So if we're looking at anything in June that we honor that weeks that we already have, um, set aside.
I would also request that, um, we get information sooner. I mean, I didn't get this information till late this afternoon and didn't really have time to look at it carefully.
Right. I mean, I, that was the point, the presentation that we're recognized that we're working as quickly as we possibly could to get the board this information based on the changes that were asked. So that's why, timing-wise, how quickly does the board wish us to have this? Is it by, just give me a general, by the end of June, um, by the end of July, that way.
What's feasible?
Victoria knows what we're looking for in terms of time. I mean, by the end of June is, is feasible. There's.
Yeah, but one of the issues is when, when can the board find another night that we can meet? And, and I, I also want it to be a study session because I want the community to be able to participate. I think tonight was very useful. Um, it's a little hard to do this in June at this point because of the two weeks that people are traveling and then, yeah, I mean, we could look at dates, but I think we should just build the deadline around when we're able to schedule something that's.
By August.
Could it, could it be the final week of June? Because I think we're all here for another meeting, that final week of June that we've committed to for.
Yeah, well, let's, let's look at.
Look at that. I mean, unless.
So, yeah, if by the end of June, so we'll, we can look at dates there and if for some reason we have to push, I just wanted to get some confines of when the board wants.
Yeah, well, it's, it's hard to do it in July and August because it excludes people from the community that weren't in town.
Yep, for sure. So we can look to the end of June if that's feasible. Okay, I think staff.
And is there a way that there could be, um, some community members on the, in the group thinking of these plans?
I'm, I'm not sure. I think the information we've asked for is, really needs to come from the team over there. I mean, we're not, no, there's no group doing it.
Well, I, I thought it was this, this staff.
Yeah, right.
Those three guys, basically.
I think, member Perry, one thing I've heard and I've really appreciated from staff, so here's your thank you staff. Is any community member that has a significant concern has been meeting one-on-one, um, with staff to share their concerns in a, in a, um, open back-and-forth manner. So if you're, um, somebody, I, I don't know how many of these meetings you've had, but I know that you've had many. And that really makes me feel better that if there's a significant concern out there and the person is willing to, um, you know, take the meeting, they can get some of their questions answered and their input logged. So aside from the three hundred pieces of input that we've already received in the public format, so.
We went for a quick five-minute break, please.
We're going to get started in just a minute. If you could take your seats, please. Get back to our meeting, please, and we have, um, Mr. Dixon doing a financial options presentation.
Thank you, President Vickers. Um, I'm very pleased tonight we have Jason Chung from Fieldman, Rolap and Associates. He's our district's financial advisor. They helped us through our last, uh, general obligation refinance in twenty twenty. Um, they were pivotal in that as it was a competitive sale that ended up saving our taxpayers about four million dollars, um, as, as we took advantage of historic interest rates. And tonight, because we do not have defined scopes and we're still working through the actual master plan update itself, we did, however, want to satisfy the board's request to look at what are potential financing options that could exist to support the projects. And so, uh, Jason's going to go over that tonight. It's going to be a very high level because again, this is just a set of ranges of how the financing works. And so if there, there are specific questions on the mechanics of each financing tool or any technical questions that come up tonight, um, we're all here to answer those tonight, but you can also please follow up after the meeting because I know this presentation has a lot of information in it, um, and it's something that we're happy to respond to later as well. So with that, I will turn it over to, uh, Jason.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, President Vickers. Uh, tonight I just prepared a few slides covering your outstanding debt as well as some financing options to consider. So slide two is the historical assessed valuation since nineteen ninety-one. An assessed valuation is the taxable value of property in your district. It's typically much lower than the current market value. And for a period of over three decades, your historical growth is extremely stable and strong. There's only one year of decline in nineteen ninety-five, but literally every year since then, you've expanded in your tax base. Uh, when you look at your long-term averages, they're all extremely strong and consistent, ranging from five to seven and a half percent. On the bottom right chart, as a unified district, you are allowed to. On the bottom right chart, as a unified district, you are allowed to incur bond debt up to 2.5% of your assessed value at any time. And so currently that maximum value is around $640 million. However, as of today, on the books, you only have a little over 12 million in debt outstanding. And so it's currently a very low debt burden on your community with respect to geo debt. On slide three is a summary of the existing bond measure that was approved all the way back in June 2001 for 39 million. And when we completed that bond refinancing in 2020, it reduced the tax rates as soon as the next year in 2021. So you see the previous tax rates through 2020 were hovering around 15 to $12. And then it really went lower to around $10 for 100,000 assessed value. And so as you can see, these darker blue bars are what's just projected to pay in the future. So there's only about five years left of payments on these existing bonds. If the district does not go off another bond and we just let this program run out, there will be no more tax rate as soon as year 2029. So slide four, that's your only geo bond debt outstanding as of today. And we were requested to provide an estimate on some funding options that could be provided as early as this year. There's currently no existing voter bond authorization, of course. So that next choice would be what's called a certificate of participation. And this is an obligation that is repaid directly by district operational funds and most commonly your general fund. And under current market rates, we show that when we can dedicate approximately $2.1 million of repayment each year for up to 30 years, you could raise as large as 35.7 million with today's interest rates. On the flip side, we were asked also to look at what would it cost to fund 100 million exactly? That annual obligation rises from about 2.1 million to about 5.8 million. So quite a significant increase. What you get, you raise upfront $100 million for projects. And then when we run the numbers also, we wanted to compare it to what a cost of a COP versus a general obligation bond. Because the general obligation bond, that repayment is covered by your taxpayer community, whereas COP covered by its district. Your general obligation bond is you would actually, your rating is the highest possible rating you can achieve, AAA. So you would, you would probably save around 10 to 11 million dollars in interest costs compared to the COP for reference. This slide takes all 29 districts in your county that have general obligation bonds outstanding and ranks them according to the tax rate paid on the community. And the lighter blue bar in the middle is the median rate at $26.34 per 100,000. And if you look at the very bottom, you have the second lowest tax rate in the county at $9.71 for 100,000. And the median assessed value, again, not the current market value, but the median assessed value in your district is about $1.1 million. And so when you multiply that tax rate by the median home value, that average cost for your median taxpayer is about $109 per year. It's pretty manageable at this point. And we just wanted to show this for reference because you are among the lowest in the county, even when we have higher income cities such as Irvine, Huntington Beach, Newport Mesa Unified. And so the next few slides just very quickly cover some hypothetical funding projections from a general obligation bond measure. And this is, this, the first one would be called a tax rate extension. And it's what, this would be where the district communicates to voters that if you approve a future bond, the rate that they have been paying up to this point would not increase, but we would just merely extend the rate of payment. So as, as mentioned earlier, these payments would expire in year 2028. If we looked at a tax rate extension, it would just continue that $10 per $100,000 rate through approximately year 2055. So obviously the trade-off is you're limiting yourself because as a unified district, you can go up to $60. But this tax rate, you're really keeping that tax rate consistent. And so you're restricted to how much you can ultimately generate. And we're showing about 74 million with this approach. At a $10 new rate, so this would be a traditional geo bond measure structure where every time you go up for a new authorization, you are allowed a new fresh tax rate. And this would be additive on top of the 2001 collection. And so if this was approved, the aggregate tax rate would be closer to $20 until year 2028. Then in year 2029, only this new measure would be on the books and it would be about that $10 rate for 100,000. And so since you're not wrapping around any existing debt, it's a little bit larger funding for the $10 new rate at about $80 million. The next few slides I won't go through, but they just get progressively larger as you go higher in your tax rate. And we went all the way up to $30, even though legally you could seek an authorization up to 60. But at a $30 tax rate, it generates approximately $240 million projects. And slide 13, this chart shows the passage rates for all the previous top 39 bond elections since February 2008. And you can see March 2020 was really low at 36% passing. And that's quite the outlier compared to in this data set. And there's a number of reasons for that. We had the stock market drop by 13% about two weeks before election day. We had COVID cases just becoming, just coming stateside. So there's a lot of uncertainty. And when there's a lot of uncertainty, any kind of revenue tax measure is just going to get kind of crushed. And so it's positive in the two election cycles since that time. We've seen success rates trend back up to the historical average success rate of 70 to 80%. One, however, important point I want to put on on this slide is if you look at the green colored dots, those are your presidential election years. And if you look at the success rates, more often than not, those are the highest rates of success. And so you have two opportunities to go for a bond in 2024. You have the March primary as well as the November presidential election. So just to keep that for reference. And this slide outlines four main phases of a geo bond measure campaign. So if you are interested in pursuing this path, that first step would be to get a feasibility study completed. This is otherwise known as a voter opinion survey or a poll. And really doing that survey will help to not only identify what tax rate your community will most likely support, but will also help identify the most important issues of need in your community as well. And so once we decide on a tax rate, our office will help provide all of the supporting financial analysis. Once those survey results are ready, we would recommend the district hire what's called a communication consultant. And this is a firm that helps you bring information-only awareness of the district's funding need to your community. And they help you navigate your political landscape. They help you identify what other competing issues might be on the election cycle as yours. And they help you build consensus in your community as well. And at the bottom of this slide are two important dates. There's an 88-day deadline that we need to have all required documentation for the county. So for the March primary, that deadline is December 8th. For the November presidential, that is August 9th. And then I kind of went through the purpose of these two firms already, but survey consultant will typically cost around $25 to $30,000. Though they're going to do an independent random sampling, so about 400 to 500, 400 to 500 polls of data. And they'll have a 95% confidence level of that. The communication consultant is usually hired on a retainer basis. So it's about 7,500 to 8,000 per month until the date that the board decides to call for an election. At that point, their, their name, their, their purpose changes from a communication consultant to a campaign consultant. And at that point, they are no longer hired by the district. They are paid by an independent campaign that is funded through donations, fundraising, other, other sorts of funds. And then we close with just some draft schedules for a March primary. We do have the December 8th deadline, but really we have CSBA conference, which is a big conference for board members. We have the Thanksgiving holiday. So typically we would look to that early November or late October meeting to have the resolution calling for election if you were to pursue March. And then for November, of course, you have a little bit more time. We would, we assume that the district board might be going dark in July. So we have a June, middle of June 2024 measure as well. But that is the rest of the slides and I thank you for your time tonight.
Remember, if you have questions.
Excellent presentation and thank the staff for answering all the questions that I asked you to do.
Any other questions?
Was it Jason?
Yes.
Okay. Jason, what's the passage rate in the primary versus the, the general? Does it differ?
Yes, if you look, there's that slide, if we can go refer to that.
Is that the historical page 14 geo bond election results slide?
That's right.
No, I was asking the, the, is it, is it two thirds or 55%? What is the?
Oh, so this, this data on slide 13 is only proposition 50, 39, so the 55% threshold. Really since proposition 39 has been passed since 2000, about 99% of bond measures have gone that because it's an easier method to pass to get 55% yes votes compared to 66.7.
Okay. So that would be the recommendation on both of these timelines.
That's correct.
So you stated that there's better pass rate on, on the presidential election tied in with that? Would that be a consideration for us as a, a November as opposed to a March?
Yes, there's some cons to that because of course with the presidential election, you generally get a larger turnout. With larger turnout means more democratic votes that are typically more supportive of bonds. However, November 2024 is going to be a monster campaign cycle. Because the last two election cycles, we've seen lower bond measures. However, the need for schools is still out there. And so all of those districts that chose not to go November, June and 2020 are going likely in 2024 of the, we work with about 11 out of 29 districts in Orange County. About half of them are going for 2024 as well. So there's going to be a lot of competing issues on the ballot for November 2020, November 2024. However, you will likely have the greatest amount of success because of that larger voter turnout.
Thank you. When, when, and the timeline, when do we need to make that type of decision? As opposed to, you know, which, which election cycle we choose?
So the, those dates on page 14 are your absolute deadlines for either election. And then obviously for a March, we would have to get started very soon. We would probably want to approve a survey and have that completed by the summer and report the results of that to the board by August or September. That would give you about one or two months to do a first reading of a project list of the resolution. However, if you decide to pivot to November, you do have more time. We would want to still get that survey completed this year and perhaps do an updated survey. It's called a tracking poll. Because that is the, when you do a tracking poll, that keeps your data fresh. Because you don't want to go make a huge decision based on data that you've collected eight months prior because things can change, of course.
But in order to proceed with the possibility of the bond issue, you need to know the scope and cost of the projects, right? So that would require us, if we wanted to do March, to make a decision on all of this.
Yeah, so that's likely based on all of the future follow-up discussions that you're planning to do. It seems like November 2024 would be the more recommended approach for this district.
Would it be worthwhile, board members too, to talk about any city measures that might be coming? Or maybe this is a question for the expert. Do school boards communicate or talk with their local municipalities to see what other municipal items might be on the ballot that might be competing?
Yeah, definitely. If you have colleagues and at the city level, it's kind of always a game of chicken because everyone, no one will ever really give you a firm yes answer. But definitely we have clients that ask their city or community college friends if they're looking at going after bonds.
So if we have a survey and it doesn't come out well, then can we just say, you know, we probably aren't going to, going to do this because it won't pass?
You certainly, yeah, because, and that's a great use of the survey, even if you decide not to purchase a bond because it's a lot. You've only purchased $30 to save yourself from a huge potential upset. So. But also you, the survey will test various tax rates. It will test the likely highest as well as likely lowest. So we might look at a survey and test a $10, 100,000. We might test the tax rate extension, which is probably the most conservative approach that we would want to recommend. But we, and then we'd also get the $30. So you would have a varying responses for those different tax rates to make a decision based off of that.
Do you guys have, does your firm have data on passage rates on extensions? Because this is really no new tax. This is just that not as a property owner, that tax falling off, of which I haven't been tracking my bill that close to know what year that's going to fall off. But there must be different data that says the passability of the extensions versus new issues.
We don't have that data, but I can tell we've, in my 11 years in this industry, every tax extension has passed. Anecdotally for my firm, I can't speak to the industry as a whole, but we've done about more than six at this point. And they've all passed 100% success rate.
And then having a really strong facilities master plan, I have heard of districts that have engaged and tried to go for a bond without a really strong facilities master plan, right? They have more of a project list versus a comprehensive process that's included a lot of community input. So based on what you've seen so far, do you feel like we would have done a, a strong job as we continue to complete our facilities master plan? Does question make sense?
Would you mind repeating it, phrasing it?
Maybe this is more of a comment to fellow board members. I have heard of other districts from other trustees that go for a bond and don't have a solid facilities master plan. Well, it's no surprise if the bond doesn't, doesn't go well. Passability is low. So I think it behooves us to have a strong process and have a strong plan in place. So that was my comments, not really a question.
Jeff, you know, when we did the, I know you weren't here, we did the previous bond. What kind of a plan we had, I remember we had, you have a report of all the things we did at the school sites. But I'm not sure what plan we presented. I don't, you know, it'd be interesting to see how we, we had such strong support on that. I think it was 81% voting. But we did a lot, we did a lot of work to get that as far as talking to community, different groups and the support for the, the need to upgrade our facilities.
Can certainly dig in and get more information on that. A lot of the historical presentations I was able to find. And that's how we pulled a lot of that information, as well as the bond oversight committees, financial work and projects that as they went. That's how we got a lot of that information. So I know that it exists. I just haven't gone through in detail and fished through to get the exact plan. But we can certainly go back and put that picture together. I think that could be helpful for the board.
It would be. Thank you. I don't remember, I just remember very significantly speaking to the taxpayers group. And that's, that really was what gave rise to FERB. But our facilities are so well maintained at this point.
Really appreciate the facility repair replacement program a lot.
Jeff, are we going to talk about other funding methods or would this conclude our presentation?
Yeah, at this point, we are looking at how we would take on basically alone ourselves, the certificate of participation or using taxpayer voted mechanism as a general obligation bond. And those are kind of the two primary focuses for now. There are of course other options when you get more specifics with the projects. But at this point, we wanted to come out with the two most common and widely used, which is what you saw tonight.
I have received other questions about using our own money, so self-funding some of this that maybe we have accumulated either from not doing some of the end of the last 10-year facilities master plan or what money has the district set aside to self-fund some of this. So I didn't know if this was the appropriate time to talk about that or in a future meeting.
There, there would certainly be a large component of self-funding as far as our facilities master plan update as it has in the past. And an example of that that we like to talk about is a lot of the soft costs that you would incur with larger projects. You wouldn't necessarily want to take out debt or financing for, because it might be a cost like a furnishing or piece of equipment that only has a five to 10-year life and you don't want to be paying 25 years of debt on that. So that would be a self-funding approach that we would take outside of any sort of financing. So it'll all have to be wrapped together as a single package with the full master plan itself. But it is good to have that discussion now for sure, but it is on the top of our minds when completing the financing plan.
Yes, it's not all fully financed. We're not, there is, we do have money set aside that we've saved, that we put into the, the different funds. Fund 40, Fund 40, 41, those ones.
Correct. Our capital improvement program and the facility repair replacement program with our annual contribution of $2.1 million. And then of course, we have our potential one-time dollars in the fund balance. And we'll explore more of that at the meeting on Thursday, but that's been steadily growing over the years to a healthy position of about $10 million today.
So what you're, I hear you saying is it would be a combination of funding?
I believe it certainly would, you know, without knowing exactly what the scope is to be financed. But it's best practice, you want to limit how much you have to finance for projects and focus that the financing piece on the capital improvements. And then any sort of ancillary or smaller costs, we'd want to self-fund ourselves at the minimum.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And we were.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Harry Spivey?